And we're going to try to say the national, to say the Pledge of Allegiance together and we'll do our best. So I pledge allegiance to the republic, nation, one nation, God. One day, we're going to do it together.
It'll probably be the day that we're back in person.
Okay, could we have full call attendance, please?
Liz, are you on yet? If not, can I have Brady do roll call?
Yeah, I'll do it. Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Ntambba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Cavino. Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Spejo.
Yes.
And Member Rappaport.
Yes.
Okay, the town of Burlington will be holding the January 21, 2021 Planning Board Meeting as a virtual election due to the current state of emergency due to the COVID-19 virus. As such, the governor issued an executive order on March 12, 2020, authorizing remote meetings under General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This meeting will be held via WebEx and is accessible as follows. The link is also available on the Planning Board website and on the posted agenda on the town calendar. The meeting number is 1790354527 with passwords 1645. You can email planning@berlincoln.org if you have questions about the agenda or the proceedings. You can join by phone 617-315-0704. The meeting is also being broadcast on BCAT, Government Compass 99, RCN 15, Verizon Channel 41, and streamed on Facebook Live via the BCAT Facebook Government webpage. The public will also be able to make comments during the hearing. During the time for public comment, questions can be asked via WebEx phone, Facebook Live, WebEx chat, and email at berlincoln@planningatberlincoln.org. During the meeting, all persons wishing to ask a question or make a comment must identify themselves. All votes will be taken by roll call, and we ask that if you are not speaking, that you find your mute button so we can hear everybody else. And with that, I hand it back over to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Kristin.
Are you ready for a motion?
Yes, we do have some continuances, and I'm ready for the motion, Paul.
I make a motion to take items 8 and through 8W out of order.
This is Mike, I'll second.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Ntamba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Cavino.
Yes.
Member Spejo. Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
So moved.
I can't hear anything.
You can't hear anything?
Who is that speaking?
Is that a call-in user?
Have you muted this entire conversation, or what's going on?
Are you on the phone, or are you on the computer?
If he can't hear us, I don't think he can answer.
Obviously.
Just a thought.
I think it might be call-in user three, but I don't know who that is.
It's Robert Paradise.
All right, Liz or Brady?
I still cannot hear anything.
Try to chat and troubleshoot. I think, I also think we might have an email address for him as well. With that, I'm just going to summarize the continuances. The continuances all have to do with Azure at 60 Blanchard Road. They are Azure Clean Rooms on Demand Burlington LLC, the applicant. There are a number of special permits pursuant to 4271 Light Manufacturing and Processing Plans, Prototype Manufacturing. Special permit pursuant to 42711 Research and Development of the zoning bylaw. Special permit 4274 Laboratories Engaged in Research, Experimental and Testing Activities. Special permit pursuant to 42741 Life Science Laboratories Engaged in Research, Prototype Manufacturing, Experimental and Testing Activities. Special permit pursuant to 42742 Life Science Laboratories Engaged in the manufacture of life science technologies and medicines for commercial production to the market. Special permit pursuant to 4279 Hazardous and Toxic Material Chemical Use Storage. A special permit pursuant to 42711 Generation or Storage of Hazardous Waste Limited to volumes classified as very small quantity generator. Special permit pursuant to 4328 Maintenance Shops, Power Plants, and Machine Shops. A special permit pursuant to 4.4.1.11 Discharge from Man-made Structures into the Wetlands. And finally, special permit 6121 Nonconforming Structures and Premises of the Zoning Bylaw. Again, all 60 Blanchard Road, Azure Clean Rooms, they will be back before us at our next meeting, and they will be in front of the Board of Health next week. If anyone has any curiosity about that process, which we're waiting for comments from them before we conclude our own process. So with that.
I make a motion to continue this matter as a planning board meeting of February 4, 2021, as requested by the applicant's attorney in a letter dated January 20, 2021.
Do I have a second?
Second, Ernie.
Thank you, Ernie.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Ntamba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Sorry, yes.
Next up on our agenda is citizens' time. If there is someone in the listening audience that would like to speak on a matter that is not on our agenda, please identify yourself. All right, seeing none, we will move on. We do not have, oh, we have some announcements, actually.
Sure, so as everybody knows, we're all excited for town meeting, which is happening on January 25. The town clerk is doing it via WebEx for the second time, but everybody else, please tune in on BCAT. I'm sure there are other ways you can kind of get involved with that, so look on that website. The Sculpture Park Committee will have a meeting on February 2 at 7:30 a.m. I believe that's via Zoom, Barbara, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Excellent. And then the zoning bylaw review committee will happen on February 10 at 6:30 p.m., also via Zoom. Anybody else, board members, do you have any other announcements that you want to make?
Madam Chair. Thank you. I'd just like to let everybody know that BCAT will be holding a general membership meeting next Tuesday night at 7 o'clock via Zoom. And the link is either on BCAT's homepage or on BCAT's Facebook page. And there'll be, it'll be a virtual member meeting to connect and update everybody on the current happenings at BCAT. There's also a new webpage being rolled out, and there are some revisions to the BCAT bylaws that some people who are interested in BCAT might want to be aware of. And everybody, from what I understand, everybody who lives or works in Burlington is actually a voting member of BCAT, so. And that's 7 o'clock next Tuesday night via Zoom, link either on BCAT's homepage or BCAT's Facebook page. Thank you.
Ernie, if you want to share that, if you want to send that to us, the staff, we can share that via our social media as well.
Madam Chair.
I will do that. Thank you.
Yes, Paul, go ahead.
I just want to let people know there was a wonderful article in the bulletin that came out from trustees of the reservation about Mary Cummings Park. And it was all high praise, and it was, it's very good for the town of Burlington. I gave Barbara a copy of it. But if you get to see it, it's a wonderful tribute also to the people who were involved in getting that done and getting it through trustees. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. It was, it was a really nice article, and it's exciting to hear all the things that they have planned for the park. Any other announcements?
Madam Chair, I just wanted to let folks know that there is a survey that is on Facebook. It's for the Lower Town Center and the redevelopment of the Lower Town Center. Liz, I don't know if we can post that link on our Facebook page as well, but I did share it on the residents' page, the network page.
I think we have, but we can definitely keep recording it and keep doing that.
Yep.
Absolutely.
Yep. So currently, right now, as of our last count, we had 300 survey takers, and you know, we're really hoping for at least 1,000. So if you could share that, you know, with your network and the folks that you know with Burlington community, it would be really great. Thank you.
Thank you, Brenda. Okay, we do not have any legal notices or nonapprovals, so we'll be moving on to administrative matters. Our first matter is item 6A, a discussion, application for approval of a minor engineering change at 75 Middlesex Turnpike, the Burlington Mall. And Tesla Incorporated is the applicant. Who is here representing Tesla tonight?
Hi, I have Trevor Smith from Tesla, also Edward Noseworthy is from Tesla, as well as our installation manager back from paternity leave, so excited to have him back.
Great, well, welcome. And I just wanted to state upfront for this item and for other items that are on our agenda, I have watched the previous meeting that I missed and have signed the Mullet forms. So I am able to participate in these discussions and vote on these matters. So please take it away and fill us in on what's happened since the last meeting.
Yeah, absolutely. Brady Nutcher, Ted, I think had sent you kind of a revised high-level plan, so appreciate everyone's time, hope everyone's week's going well. From the last two meetings we've had, we really kind of went back to the drawing board, taking the board's feedback. Justin Feldhouse from the mall is not able to join, he's on vacation, so I hope he's enjoying himself. But him and I were kind of brainstorming what additional areas would be possible that aren't so prominent along the Burlington Mall Road. What we came up with is what Brady is sharing now. It's near kind of that new out parcel building with the Cafe Nero, but tucked behind it, so it's not visible from the Burlington Mall Road. I know there were some members of the planning board wanting us to push even further away from the amenities that are on site and that kind of overflow parking area. There's still pushback regarding kind of the snow storage, the snow removal, but even more so, it's just the potential that that is a developable parcel. So having amenity, this charging station there kind of restricts the landlord from being able to redevelop the site if they ever decide to down the road. Also, kind of a big component of this is, you know, we kind of touched on this in some previous meetings, but this is truly kind of a site amenity. So certainly wanting to provide a great customer experience, which is why we've selected this property. We don't want to feel so isolated or have electric vehicle owners feel so isolated that they're really forced to just sit in their car, especially on a day like today, if they're too far away from the amenities. So we feel like this is kind of a good mix and compromise, being tucked, you know, in the development away from the main entrances, as well as still providing, you know, kind of a good customer experience overall for owners using the amenity on site. So we also have a few pictures and what we're proposing. And perhaps you can zoom in, Brady, if possible, just to the equipment area itself. What we're proposing is to really take advantage of the landscape that is in this area and add additional vegetation, evergreens, if needed, to fully mask the equipment. It's something that we traditionally do. I think overall aesthetically kind of blends in with the site, doesn't feel like you have this random enclosure away from the building. And we have a few examples that we've sent along of sites that we've utilized this type of landscaping, as well as more of a close-up of the type of kind of trucks enclosure that we would use if an enclosure was required in this area, to kind of give both options and present both options. So there's still a little bit of due diligence needed to fully vet this option, but we're hoping for kind of approval from the planning board on this location before kind of fully changing gears and spending additional, you know, CapEx and bandwidth without really good indication that this is something that's going to be viewed in a positive light in terms of this new location. So with that, Ed, happy to have you provide any input as well, but I'll leave that to comments for the board.
Yeah, Trev, I think you pretty much nailed it. Thank you. And same boat as you, just happy to answer any sort of technical questions. If you have any questions about equipment or site layout, just let us know.
Madam Chair.
Sorry, I was muted. Before I turn this over to the board, there was a meeting that was held earlier this week for myself and another member who wasn't, who were not present at the past meeting. And we discussed some flex spaces there. Could you perhaps take a moment to explain that to the board before we turn it over for questions?
Yeah, absolutely. It was brought up in the subcommittee meeting on Tuesday. Kind of deeper understanding on 12 spaces, do we really need 12 spaces? We would argue, we do, given kind of the history and data we have over the utilization in nearby sites. Linfield and Framingham, of note, both have 12 stalls, as well as the traffic data we have of the amount of vehicles that are passing by this exit. But something that I was willing to compromise on is to start and not have the signs that are, you know, kind of information placards letting you know which, you know, what these posts are and what their intended use is. Not have all of them, all 12 of them say Tesla Vehicle Charging Only, and have eight of them say Tesla Vehicle Charging Only, quote-unquote, dedicated, and having four be what we would call enabled, available for general parking, with the condition that, once there was a routine amount of traffic that warranted more than, you know, eight chargers being dedicated and that level of of traffic and use at the site, we would have the ability to, you know, convert those spaces, but a kind of a compromise in the middle to build all 12 and have the ability to just switch the sign as opposed to kind of going back and having to dig up the soil again and go through kind of the whole process. And we're certainly happy to bet on ourselves, we're very optimistic, we're certainly going to need 12. I think some of us feel like it's not enough, but I think that dedicated versus enabled is something we're comfortable with and have had success with in the past at other locations as well.
Okay, thank you. All right, staff, did you want to weigh in on this before I turn it over to the board?
Sure. We, after the last meeting, we kind of took a look at, okay, what was kind of the themes coming out of the last meeting. And, I mean, when you really look at the Sears parking lot, it's, you know, for the better part of an explanation, kind of like a desert. When you see everything, I don't know, I kind of remember when there was the photo map or whatever, that became the key kiosk that you could see for miles. But anyway, so looking at the site and kind of finding a place to put it, put Tesla, and, you know, when we were looking at kind of this defining the corner and along Burlington Mall Road, it was like, is there a way we can take a look at this use, being a comparable use to the mall for people that want to charge their cars? You guys mentioned, kind of, how do we look at this a little bit more holistically around the different sites of the mall? And where would we, if we were looking at this from scratch, where would we be thinking about putting charging spaces? And one, it was, okay, how can we tuck it, tuck them into the existing landscape? How can we put them in locations that probably won't be kind of the next chapter of the mall and developable area? Close enough, but not in prime spaces to be walkable to both the main mall and the village. And then, you know, obviously, different ways to screen the equipment. And I think Tesla, in talking with Tesla and Justin, they suggested this location, I think it is a good location. Justin was on the call that we had with staff last week before he went on vacation. We did bring up the ability to have more non-Tesla charges.
My audio doesn't fucking work.
Are you sure it's not your audio?
Yes. Non-spaces on Tesla, non-Tesla spaces, sorry, lost my turn of thought, along this area, in this area as well. And Tesla had, and we've discussed it, to make sure that there's a connecting conduit into these spaces to allow for connections of other spaces, working with Simon. We also had, wanted to talk about just screening of the utilities. I think we have a shot that you could see the existing island and trees that I want to show at some point in this conversation. And then I'd like to talk more about how we, you know, just screen with kind of fence, fencing as well as vegetation in this area. But I think we're, we're able to do it very much easier in this location than kind of the desert area of the Sears parking lot. So I, in our opinion, I think this is a much better solution than the original. And I thank Simon and Tesla for continuing to work with us to really make this a better proposal and include, hopefully include other charging as well along with this area. So with that, we do have a decision drafted, and would recommend approval with conditions that they've both stated about the having eight Tesla and four kind of flex spaces. And working with Simon to have the other Tesla spaces, non-Tesla charging spaces as well on this side of the mall, where we don't have too many in this area. So, so thank you.
Thank you, Kristin. This is Barbara again. I think I'm going to ask Vice Chairman Ntamba to chime in here with questions, but also with any departmental comments.
I don't have the comments.
So I can help out with comments. So the only comments we have are from Inspector of Buildings, and then from the Fire Department. And so we'll just grab them.
I will say the Inspector of Buildings comments, a lot of them had to do with issues with signage along Burlington Mall Road.
Yeah, that they might not be relevant anymore.
Exist in this location, where freestanding signs would have been considered if they were along the roadway, which does not apply here.
No, no, it does not.
So therefore, we don't have any new comments of record?
Nothing that hasn't been read into the record thus far, no.
Thank you.
Do you want the board comment? Do you want, are you currently for board?
Well, thanks. Thank you, Liz. And Joe, why don't you start us off with questions or comments?
Sure. So I had the opportunity to be on the call on this a couple of days ago, and they indicated that they had moved it. I actually like the new location a lot better. I, my only concern with this would be that we get sufficient screening as it's still next to a drive aisle coming in. It's not, it's not near the main drive aisle, and it's not near Mall Road, but I still feel like we need to have this thing screened sufficiently, if that's where it's going to go. I would prefer to go over one lot over, you know, closer, closer to Middlesex Turnpike, but if that's not going to happen, I at least want to see more screening than we have here now. That would be my comment.
Yeah, I don't know, this is Edward Tessa, happy to respond to that. And yes, we're totally on board with accommodating the screening. You can see sort of a high-level screening called out in the green there, but, you know, now that we're doing a full revision in this area, we'll have something more robust and even, you know, some, we could put some photo renderings together for you to your liking of our proposed screening. And we're happy to do that a little bit further down the line. And if you have any sort of further revisions at that point, happy to do those as well. But we are, we are definitely planning on screening these, and we've done it in the past. We think we have a good game plan to do so, and hopefully it will be completely hidden from that drive aisle that you're speaking about.
That would be perfect. That's actually what I was saying today, I'd like to see some renderings from, from that road, you know, from that drive aisle that comes in. I'd like to see renderings of, you know, the screenings you're going to do and the, hopefully, there's also a few trees in there that are supposed to be evergreens, but they're, they don't look like there's much left to them. So they probably have to be replaced as well, but like to see what kind of plantings you put there and screenings you do, and we'll go from there. So I think that's my next step anyway, so.
Great, yep, that's no problem.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Joe. Paul, do you have any questions or comments?
Yes, I'm going to be a fly in the air on this one. So I just asked for a little time, because we're a planning board, so we're supposed to plan. And I was uneasy as this discussion was going on till the very end, when Bill said, this is not a minor engineering change. And I said, that's my problem, because Bill has been telling us, I don't know how he knows, but he knows, that the electrics are coming. He said, the major companies, and, you know, there was a major article in one of the magazines recently that they're now working and developing electric engines for the big highway trucks. So I'm looking forward to be on when I'll be here, but the day is coming not too long from now when gas stations are going to be like, you know, people will be telling their kids, well, that was the old days when they use gasoline, because electric's coming. So if it's coming, why not plan for the whole site? And I'll just end by saying this, that in thinking about it, what I would like to see, the back parking lots that face towards Route 3 and so forth, those are not used. I walk once a month at least around the mall, and they're mostly collectors of trash now. I would like to see one of those areas become a car corral. This is, if you went to the mall generally, you would not, you're not going to the mall to get your car charged. You're going from your house and so forth. But for those who are going to the mall and want to get their charge card, I want a place, corral, where all the stations are. You go, you put your credit card in, you leave your car, there's a shuttle, you get on the shuttle, and it takes you to wherever in the mall you want to go. When you're through with your mall shopping and so forth, you go out and, you know, wait for the shuttle and go back to where your car is. So that's all I'll say about it for now.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Does, I don't know if the Tesla people want to address that, or if we want to?
Yeah, I guess just a quick comment on, I mean, in my opinion, it's not electric vehicles are coming, like, they're already here. We sold half a million cars last year, which I understand under the kind of the full umbrella of how many vehicles are sold is a small drop in the bucket. But we're talking about hundreds of thousands at this point, and, you know, these stations generate thousands of users a month. And I think we just have to kind of think about this in a completely different way. It's a complete paradigm shift to your travel. You know, 80% of electric vehicle owners' charging is actually done at home. So, you know, not everyone has, you're not going to equate it to then everyone having a gas station at their house. So just the way we think about charging is fundamentally different than the way you think about filling up a gas tank. It's really amenity-driven. The goal is to make charging ubiquitous, so no matter what shop or what property you're going to, it has a place to plug in. I envision more, certainly more charging, but fitting seamlessly in your life, not, not the way gas is currently, where you're going out of your way to fill up your tank. But you're charging your car in an effort where you're, you're doing your day-to-day errands, and there happens to be charging there. It's not, you know, kind of a depot, or it's know, kind of a depot or its own kind of separate facility. It just is kind of fitting into your, your day to day, very similar to charging your cell phone. You know, when you sit at your desk, you have a place to charge your cell phone. When you go home, you can charge your cell phone and, and kind of that's the way electric vehicle infrastructure is viewed and being implemented.
Thank you. All right. Let's move on. Let's see who is next. Ernie, would you like to ask me?
Sure. Thank you. First, the question for Steph. I know this is a minor engineering change, but is there any way we can put a review period in here and the, and the permit that we issue like out five years or even 10 years, Kristin?
What are you looking to, possibly, what are you looking to review?
Just the, the, the use, even the location. I mean, in 10 years, I don't know what, I was thinking like Paul, was thinking that, wow, we're putting a gas station right in the middle of a, of a shopping of a, of a mall, a premier mall. And, and then I started to think in, in even, I don't have an electric vehicle myself yet, but I would imagine the majority of charging is going to be done at home. So this is going to be a, oh yeah, while I'm here, I'll also charge my vehicle rather than where can I go get gasoline and I make a special trip to the, to the store, to the gas station. But I don't know if I'm right or wrong, or if any of us is right or wrong as far as the use is concerned. And I just thought it, it was something that should be looked at again, once the, once there, there, we have many more electric vehicles around is there. I don't know if you can understand what I'm trying to say.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I'm not muted. So your criteria for approval, whether it's a site plan or a minor engineering change is actually the same. So you know, whether or not you're looking at it as a minor engineering change or site plan, a minor engineering change is also a site plan. So if you elevate it, you still have the criteria for approval, which is internal circulation, Egress shall provide for traffic safety and access to and from minor street servicing, minor streets. Visibility of parking and service areas from adjoining streets and districts shall be minimized. Adequate access to structures for fire and service equipment shall be provided. Utilities and drainage in the facility shall be adequate. Exterior lighting shall not join, shine onto adjoining properties. Effective use shall be made of topography, landscaping and building placement to enhance the neighborhood. So I mean, those are your criteria. So if we want to look at something view of something that has to do with kind of those areas of approval, I think we do that.
The only, the only thing I could think of that might fit in there was if they, if we had like lines at the charging stations, and I doubt that would happen because it's just like, so, okay. Skip it. Forget I mentioned it. I'm sure that the, that the mall or even, we're in the mall will be coming back and for some modifications if things change.
One thing that I think we can for sure do is, is put something in there as we do with other kind of technologies that we don't know where they're going is, you know, when technologies change or technologies obsolete, that make sure that everything's taken down.
Yeah, okay.
If it's not being used, it's not being, it's not taking up spaces for sure. I mean, I want to make sure that happens. But in terms of, I mean, if you want to think about it a little bit more, those, it would, I would encourage you to fit it into one of those categories for your reasons why you're wanting to review.
Just the only reason I would, was thinking of was because of the, the unknown out in the future. And I think that would be taken care of by, by the need. But moving on, I like this location much better than the last location, much, much better. And I do think we obviously need some screening. And it appears that Tesla and, and the mall have agreed to do some screening. And, and rather than, than hold up the approval of the permit, I would like to leave the discretion on, on the screening up to the chair and the planning director or her designee. So, but other than that, I am all set right now. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Member Cavino. This is Barbara again, Member Spel. Are you, would you like to comment?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would. I really like this new location a lot better than the one on Mall Road. I think it is good, very good because it's, it's close enough to the Village and both the old Sears building that it'll encourage and drive business for, you know, someone to just not sit in their car, to actually get up and either go get a coffee or go over and walk over to the mall while their car charges. Trevor, during the meeting on Tuesday was mentioned, one of the goals I'd like to see is the, is that we get hopefully potentially down the line, four of the universal stations just to the, the top, on the top part of this, this section. And could you touch on what you mentioned in the meeting Tuesday about the sizing of the transformer and the conduits and how it'll be installed in a way that adding hopefully potentially some universal spots in there would be easier? Just to share that with the rest of the boarding that that was good stuff.
Trev, I can take that if you'd like.
Well, Ed, I'll let you get into the technical aspect, but I think it's, it's an important point to, to kind of bring up because I know there's some board members who feel like electric vehicles, there's competition, more are coming and it's not just Tesla. And we absolutely encourage it, right? Tesla's mission is to accelerate the transition to sustainable energy and electric vehicles. So the fact that other OEMs and manufacturers are going to be producing electric vehicles, compelling electric vehicles, it excites us. We don't want this to be a walled garden. And as a result, we don't sign any exclusivity at the property. So we're certainly encouraging and support other manufacturers and charging infrastructures to come in and invest in, in infrastructure right along beside us at a, at a later date or whenever funding's available on, on their end. One thing we do, and Ed can touch specifically more on this, and it's called out, I know the screens or text is a little small, but it, it calls out a future handhold and conduit for others. So essentially we'll just tap into, or have another conduit into the transformer. So if someone else, all they need to do is, is set up their switchgear and specific charging equipment to the stalls that they're going to go in, which would, in this case, most practical would be the ones right adjacent to us. But all the heavy lifting and in regards to bringing the primary to this and setting up that transformer is already in place at the hands of Tesla. So there's no hurdle or barrier entry for someone else to come in and, and utilize that infrastructure. And in fact, typically makes them more receptive to, to come when, when they know, you know, there's charging available, there's infrastructure available, certainly with the type of service that, that we also bring to the, the area on the property. So Ed, feel free to kind of fill in any gaps that I may have missed from a technical standpoint.
Yeah, no, that's great. I would just add that, you know, when, when we're putting in these new services, it's a lot of legwork with the utility, in this case, Eversource. It's, it's months of planning and figuring out how we're going to get that primary and a transformer of our new site. So, you know, to, to like Trevor alluded to, sort of in good faith and we at our cost will install future conduits and a handhold so that third party, should they come there somewhere down the road, their life will be a lot easier. It's just kind of plug and play as opposed to starting the whole process over with the utility again. So we're happy to do that. Think it's a good idea. And you know, it's, it's nice for, for someone else down the line, if and when they decide to co-locate with us. So, and it is called out in the plans there and well, you know, we'll make sure we're doing that for you. Thank you. Much appreciated and also encouraged, you know, that, that our goal for a charging area will be built. So you'll kind of set the groundwork. So thank you to Tesla for that. Thanks. That's all I had, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mike. Bill Gaffney.
Sure. Thanks, Madam Chair. I would agree with Member Raymond that we really, as planners should really plan for this with the electric vehicle charging stations occurring in the mall originally, spaced out, ad hoc, getting nibbling at that. And now we've got Tesla and I would, I, again, this is going to be, me with how the wireless activity has changed over a short period of time. The electric vehicle is also changing very, very rapidly. I actually read an article this past week that says a, a battery manufacturer is working with a automotive OEM on charging a car in five minutes. So this, this, this idea of, let's put it near something because you, you've got half an hour to 45 minutes to wait for it, that is going to go by very, very quickly and your technology is moving very rapidly, such that the folks with electric vehicles are going to expect that you're going to be able to charge your vehicle from a shorter period of time and you can go a longer distance. So that's what, that's what the whole industry is going for. So again, to have this here near amenities, I don't think that's critical. And again, to Ernie, you, you, I like where you said, let's look out a couple of years. 10 years is going to be way too long for that. It's going to be, you look out two years, you look out three years, five years is going to be, you're going to have five minute charging stations. And whether the infrastructure that's already in place, the gas station stays that way and they do electric charging at that point, I, I believe that's probably the way to go. And things will go that way because the infrastructure there for high volume, on and off, five minute charging is going to occur right at those same areas of, of traffic centers. So I think it is, Paul said, plan, and we're going to plan for this. If you, if someone's thinking that it's going to be, we're going to stay stagnant for a period of time where this all makes sense and we're going to put your long time charging stations, yeah, I would say put it in a car park. Put it in where Paul's thinking about it over on the side and have it for everybody over there. You can have the Teslas over there. We won't put any more near the stores, right? We're just going to put every one that we have over in that corner of the, of the mall. And then whether you can walk that way or there's a shuttle or something like that, probably, probably a nitrogen charge shuttle, right? Because we're not going to use gas at that point, a natural gas. So that's, that's where I'm at. We've got to the landscaping, having, we wait on that. I think this is critical that we take a look at that, not only from the trees that they're going to put, but from around the existing facilities. I think that's really critical. Just seeing this right now, I haven't had an opportunity to even think of where that might be. And I'd like to walk the site to see where that is currently, to see what would be needed. Not only where they have landscaping, but coming back and looking from Middlesex Turnpike to what that's going to look like and what additional landscaping you need there. So I'm still, I'm not convinced and I wouldn't be able to vote on this today for sure.
Yeah, just kind of comment if I can. And I certainly agree with Member Gaffney on, you know, kind of the technological innovations. You're absolutely right. But this is, we're talking about a spectrum of charging. And there's already much slower charging infrastructure out there that people are still deploying, level two infrastructure. So when talking, when you're talking about kind of the full scope of charging infrastructure, there's level one, which is like your standard 110 outlet that you plug your phone into. Yes, you could charge your car, but it would be very slow, like three miles for every hour you're charging. Level two, which is typically like 50 amps around, you know, 20 to 30 miles for every hour, which is a great resource for a place like workplace or a hotel, a place where you have a longer dwell time. And then there's level three, which is more like 30 to 60 minute dwell time. So when thinking about these technological advances, I think we have to think about where, and with Justin was on to speak to this, where a good fit would be, you know, I, I don't think you would want a gas station per se in, in the parking lot of this mall because it's not really driving a ton of traffic and revenue into the retailers, into the tenants. And, you know, kind of part of the charm and, and reason why we have such a great national relationship with Simon and work with them now at a handful of locations, including the South Shore Plaza, is because they see the alignment in terms of the dwell time and the amenities and tenants that are on site. And so they want to provide this amenity to their tenant. Like I said before, charging is going to be ubiquitous. You're going to have perhaps in five, 10, 15 years' time, that really fast, quick charger that you would use. I would argue this, this wouldn't be a great property for it. Stick it in a service plaza or retrofit a, a gas station that is more experienced with that transient dwell time and turnover. You don't need to go to, you know, 100, 200 car parking lot. So the customer experience though of this type of charger, a 250 kilowatt charger, as it stands today, will, will always have a use case as long as there's tenants on this property that, you know, have people staying 30 to 60 minutes. So that's just my, you know, kind of response to, you know, kind of where the industry is going, which I agree with, but also still doesn't lose value of currently what's being proposed for Burlington.
Okay. Thank you, Bill. Did you have anything else?
Yeah, no, I just, I would just agree with that. I think what we might have, want to do here before you stop to put the eight in, and I'm glad they came down from the 12, is that you maybe start out with four, you have all the facilities in place and see how that goes. This is going very, very quickly, this technology. And I think this stuff's going to go by the way of the dodo very quickly. It's not going to be five, 10, 15, absolutely not. It's going to be much, much quicker. And maybe the applicant doesn't have that visibility to that. But again, maybe you put four spaces in for the, for the, kind of the older vehicles that are going to have that, that slower charge, but the rest, as things move and the momentum goes for the, for the faster charging. Again, the article this past week talked about graphite being used in the lithium ion battery and in a automotive OEM going in that direction. I think you'll see everybody pushing for that kind of that instantaneous charge that they do use currently with gas stations as they pump up for five minutes. So that's what the, I think that everybody's got the goal for that. And that's where the industry will go. I think this is going to be very minimalized. If they need it, let's just keep it to four currently and then move. That's be my thought on that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Bill. Brenda, you're up.
I think we're getting better on the location. You know, to mirror what some of the other board members have said, I think that we really should be kind of pushing this a little bit more in the corner. And you know, I also would recommend a site walk or, you know, I'll meet Bill over there and we can walk it together. You mentioned something about subletting the infrastructure to basically a competitor. Would that be at a cost or a courtesy?
So we weren't talking about subletting, just essentially laying the foundations for someone else to come and utilize that infrastructure. So we're paying, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars to develop this station. A lot of that cost is driven by that new transformer we're having to place, that new service and extending the existing primary lines that are on the property. And what that, what that enables is a future manufacturer coming in and having their own agreement with Simon to utilize the spaces adjacent or next to or near our station. So it's, it's not Tesla subletting or subleasing. That would all be with, with the mall ownership, but they would be able to take advantage of the infrastructure that we're paying for that's going to be put in place as a result of the station.
So there would be no cost to the competitor if they were to use that infrastructure?
There'd be no cost, there would be no cost to extend the primary line, but there would be cost for them to put in their secondary from that transformer to their own charging cabinets, but they wouldn't have to worry about trenching or having, you know, 100 foot primary line extension that we had against.
Is that something you do at other locations?
In terms of stubbing up future handhold or a future handhold and stubbing up future conduits? Yeah. If the property owner is, is really interested in that. It's also just inherent in the infrastructure. So typically, you know, if you have a transformer onsite and it has an open primary line, you can just easy chain and extend off of that. So it's really no additional, not a huge additional heavy lift from us. The real heavy lift is just the fact that we're having to bring this primary over. Like we would have loved if the charging stations that are currently on site in a much more prime area of the parking lot, we wish they weren't in as such a prime area and maybe in a location like we're proposing. And they did that. So we could have easily just Uh, and they did that, so we could have easily just utilized that infrastructure, but, but that's not the case. We're having to kind of start from scratch, um, and someone else coming to the property uh wouldn't have that uh that constraint going against them like, like we are now. So looking ahead.
Um, you know, I, I've been doing some research, you know, uh on, you know, Tesla and kind of, you know, what's, you know, the, the discussion of what is, what is the next thing? And, you know, I noticed that there was like this, a, a twelve-person van uh that is being discussed, being made by Tesla. Um, that wouldn't necessarily fit in one of those traditional parking spaces, which is kind of why, you know, I, I feel like we should maybe revisit the location. Um, you know, and, and then the other thing to think about is, you know, we're constantly discussing how this area is transforming, you know, to have Burlington be more walkable and, you know, and um, you know, if you've ever watched a planning board meeting from us before, I'm sure you haven't, but um, we're trying to incorporate more outdoor spaces. So, you know, if we moved you or if you were to be able to, to move that this, this station kind of in that, you know, um, in the corner that, that Paul was talking about. Um, I don't think that you would be tucked away, but I think it might, I, I think it would, it would bring me more comfort, knowing that we had more space to, to play with, so to say, and to add other, other stations and to accommodate larger vehicles um, you know, going forward and instead of just kind of addressing what's in front of us right now. Um, uh like some of the other members have said, you know, I'd also want to take a look at some renderings. Um, and I, I think that's it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Brenda. Um, this is Barbara. I, I um, I like this location much better than the previous location. I do not have a problem with what Paul proposed, but I also don't have a problem with this one. I have a couple of detailed questions for the applicant and then another question for a board member. Um, these particular stations, are they illuminated?
Um, the top of this sign does have, uh, it does emit lumens. Um, it's uh, I forget what the exact spec is, but yeah.
Okay. Um, that's something that I'm going to want to know more about, and I'm also going to want to, um, we, we have to talk about when they're illuminated, what hours would they be illuminated? Would they be turned off at some point? For example, when the mall closes? Would they be available twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week? And if so, does there need to be, does mall security, do they have, I don't know if mall security is there twenty-four hours a day? So I, I don't know how that would work. So that's uh some details that I think we need to still discuss. Um, especially about the brightness and the hours.
Yep. Yeah, I can send you over the brightness as far as, um, and, and we have those, uh, just not handy. And as far as the, when, they don't turn off and on, so they, uh, they really just signify if one of the charge posts is operational or not. Like, that's a great indicator, uh, because we don't have, you know, a canopy, um, uh, huge monument sign lights. Um, like the indicator for a Tesla owner when they show up to the station to know if the station is live or not, um, is if that sign is, is lit at the top. Um, and so that's something that i- is just on when the, when the post is commissioned. Um, and then uh turns off, obviously, if there is a power outage or um, some, one of the posts needed repairs or a cabinet needed to be replaced. And it just signifies to an owner who's, you know, driving into the station, okay, use the adjacent post if it's lit and that one's not. Um, but there's no kind of on-off switch. And as far as s- safety and security, um, I mean, we, we chose this, we're very cognizant of that. Um, and that's also, that would be the primary concern about some of the other locations uh being kind of more tucked away. Is that safety and security aspect? Because these are available um twenty-four hours a day, um, just as uh they are now, like someone can go and park in the Burlington Mall at any given time of day. Um, and so we're very cognizant of making sure we're in a location that is uh gives all of our owners a sense of safety and security. Um, we've had no issues at uh our stations and, and the surrounding area as a result of that as well, and across the country with with over a thousand uh charging stations. So that's super paramount for us.
Okay, thank you. Um, I do, I am very much interested in the information you can send over to the office about how bright these are, because I, we've had some problems with overly bright signs in, in the general area, and we want to avoid another problem like that. I have a question for my fellow board members who have um very understandably and wisely brought up the fact that these, that this technology is changing and changing quickly, and that these particular stations may actually become obsolete in a relatively short period of time. And I don't disagree with that, but what I'm wondering is what are, what should we do in the meantime? And is the concern mainly just the location of these particular stations? In other words, would my fellow board members, especially Bill and Paul, and maybe Brenda was on that, was in that category too, feel more comfortable if they were in a different location, or is it just the idea of dedicating these spaces anywhere if you feel they are not going to be long-lasting? Could I, I'd like to hear from Bill and other members about that.
Uh, sure, uh, Madam Chair, I'll, I'll stop. This is Bill. Yeah, I, you know, the, where I'm looking at kind of the, the long game on this, there, there, I think everything you mentioned comes into play there. Uh, you know, as they put eight currently um in the, 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 the period of time where this technology is going, eight may be an overkill uh at this point. And, uh, you know, based on the, the small number of cars that they have, uh, you know, you know, four might be more appropriate in, in any spot. But like, I think, I, I think uh member Rappaport makes a good point about, you know, the, the future of Tesla, where they're going with their trucks and the ten-person trucks and, and maybe even, you know, uh, electric, uh, you know, uh, you know, larger trucks. Um, you know, they've got the pickup trucks, which, you know, certainly may be able to fit into uh, into these spots. But that's, you know, kind of if you think of where that technology is going, and then the use of that um for the larger vehicles and uh where, where should that happen? So having it kind of in the middle of the mall where the, the, the kind of the normal passenger traffic is and having that charging station. Um, again, I, I kind of, when I was thinking about this, I was thinking about the wireless technology that, you know, you've, you've had that um and how, how we weren't ready for that. Um, and then I thought about kind of if I'm sitting in a, at the airport and I'm waiting to get picked up, we've got a, we've got a place for that, you know? Um, and it's not too far from the airport, but you're, you're sitting there waiting in your car park and waiting to get, you know, your, your cell phone parking lot. And so I kind of, I kind of picture it as being something similar to that. And again, not, not in the middle of the mall parking spots. Uh, but again, somewhere kind of dedicated if we're going to have these, this dedicated charging station for other folks as well. Again, it's, it's not just the big three that you're talking about that's going electric, but other big names that you may be familiar with uh uh from a commercial standpoint, they're, they're all looking at electric vehicles and their goal is shorter charging and longer distance. Um, so you, you, you're going to have multiple, multiple, multiple uh car manufacturers that you, you, you're not uh hearing today, and it's a common name, but you wouldn't necessarily associate them with cars. Uh, and their, and their technology, as you're using it today, is kind of high-end, so they're going to be pushing that to kind of take that uh, that, that charging time from hours now for kind of standard in the forty-five to half an hour for the Tesla to that five-minute gas station-type instantaneous that people are using for, for their regular cars now, because that's what that people are going to be comfortable with. Just since you, since you asked me, Madam Chair, uh, maybe what we can do after this one uh gets passed and I, or maybe you can set it up for another meeting, is that the overall kind of scheme for the mall on where, where they're going with this and other areas of their parking, you know that we have uh had some issues with uh car storage at, at vacant parking lots or office building. And now we've got bus storage here at the mall, which, when we look at this, for every applicant that comes in, we look at the traffic and we look at parking. But again, try to get a, a, maybe a plan or, or something, or every time they're changing parking in the mall, uh, that they need to come before us on that, because that's just, it's, it, it adds to that, because you can't put snow there like uh, you, you can't put it there because of the snow that we've been hearing, but you can put buses there, which again, i- is not, is not really jiving with me. And that would be right in that, that section right at the high bank of Millsix Turnpike, I think would be another great spot uh for this. You could put everything there, all your charging spaces there, and that's what's going to be. It's going to be, uh, it's going to be basically a gas station at the mall. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Bill. Um, just to clarify, Bill, I don't think what's being proposed is eight spaces. What's being proposed is twelve spaces, eight of which would be dedicated only to Tesla charging, and four of which would be um open for either charging or for people to park. Correct me if I'm wrong, applicant, but I think that's what's being proposed, and I, I don't think that's what member Gaffney understood.
Yeah, yeah, you're, you're correct in that. And just to expand upon that, uh, like I said, we, in Linfield, uh, at the Linfield Supercharger, we have twelve stalls. Um, in Framingham, we have twelve stalls. Uh, each of those stations have experienced all twelve stalls being full. Um, so I think it's the, the, the amount we're proposing right now is certainly required for the existing fleet, not, not only, um, not even bringing in account the, the forecasted fleet that, uh, that is to come as, as more and more drive the, the adoption.
So Madam Chair, this is, this is Bill. So we have, the, the twelve spots are going to be completely full now based on Linfield. Where do the next twelve come, uh, where they're going to happen? And then the next twelve, as, you know, the, the volume of the Teslas, as the applicants are saying, we're going to need more than twelve. We're going to need double, triple, you know, where, where does the next dozen come from? And it's going to be probably every, you know, six months, every year, every two years, that we'll have to add another twelve. Uh, where, where do they go? So if we had kind of a larger space where the buses are, or where Paul, uh, Ma- uh, member Raymond was talking about um, and member Rappaport, out in the back, we have got those large parking uh lots where they're not currently used, and then there's opportunity for that to grow versus in, in kind of in the, in the middle of the mall where those are kind of that key parking spaces for your kind of everyday, uh, every, everyday drivers and. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank, thank you, Bill. Um, okay, that's, those are all the questions I had, but I did want to, um, this is not a public meeting, correct? But I,
Madam Chair, it's Mike. Can I add one thing?
Yes.
Another thing that was mentioned Tuesday that hasn't been mentioned tonight is that lot everyone's talking about, snow lot. I also thought it was a little ridiculous that we couldn't just use that lot because we could just find another place to put the snow, but I don't want to speak for Justin, but they, from what I understood from that last meeting on Tuesday was that they're not comfortable using that lot because it could be used for future development. Um, that's the reason why that um the mall wanted to steer away from that lot for this, this.
Okay, thank you, Mike.
Yeah.
Um, so I, I, this is not a public meeting, but I do want to give um people that are listening or tuning in a chance to comment on this. If there is anyone that would like to, please identify yourself. Staff, do we see anyone?
I'm not seeing any hands raised or in the chat function, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, from what I'm hearing from my members, I'm not sure that we should bring this to a vote tonight. I think that there are still some members that are very much on the fence about location, and we have some questions about screening and, and might want to do a site visit. Um, I know that you're anxious to get started, but I'm not sure it would be wise to push this to a vote tonight. Um, how, staff, would you like to weigh in on that?
Um, sure. I mean, I, I think that what we just want to do before um we conclude is to figure out, there's definitely questions on screening, questions on illumination. Um, there were questions about the, the fleet in terms of who's using these spaces. I certainly think we can limit them to passenger vehicles, um, single, you know, the passenger, not twelve-person vans and other things um in the future, but it, and that would just require obviously new approvals. Um, we can have a site walk, um, if Tesla, if someone from Tesla can attend that. I would recommend that if we do do that, I would want Justin Beldhouse to be there, so when he gets back to um more, to help us, I guess, explore a little bit more the um possible opportunities in other areas of the mall that don't, um, you know, for whatever the future of the mall and evolution is. Um, so I guess, other than those things that I've mentioned, what are the other things that we're looking for Tesla to respond to? Um, and also, I think, was brought up, kind of what do they look like from um, from certain view, viewsheds? Was that also a question that came up?
I think that, that question came up, and then there's just the larger question of location that um remember, that two or three members have brought up. So I think that's something we need to review.
Um, so I do think a site visit might actually be helpful um with this to to kind of look at the spaces, how they might be utilized, how you, kind of the walkability of the spaces. If that's something the applicant's up for.
Yeah, absolutely. I think it will be definitely um i- important to have Justin there. I, I think he can speak to, because, you know, they don't have uh the rights to do everything all at every single parking space you may see. So him being able to speak a little bit about uh what restrictions and covenants uh are, are in certain lots, um, as well as what maybe their planned areas uh are or potential is, uh, and, and driving the why. I mean, because we're uh really kind of leaning on him as to, you know, kind of why this location, and then we'll try to make it work. Um, so, yeah, certainly open to meeting uh inside and, and coordinating with uh, with Justin and, and staff and other members um when he's back.
Okay, thank you. Let's, let's set that up. So for now, I think it would probably be best for us to continue this to the next meeting, and hopefully we can arrange for that site visit in between now and then. Thank you for your patience.
All right. Thanks for everyone's time. Have a great evening.
Motion, please?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we uh postpone this till the next meeting.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Chairman Maru?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Npemba?
Yes.
Member Clark Raymond?
Yes.
Member Covino?
Yes.
Member Españo?
Yes.
Member Gaffney?
Yes.
Member Rappaport?
Yes.
So moved.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on. I believe we are on page seven, for people who are following along. Um, yes, under um item seven on our agenda, persons of appointment. And I would like a motion, please, to take items seven A through seven D together for discussion purposes.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to uh move to size uh items seven A through seven D together for discussion purposes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Second.
Thanks, Ernie. Do we need a roll call for that?
Chairman Maru?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Npemba? Member Clark Raymond?
Yes.
Member Covino?
Yes.
Member Españo?
Yes.
Member Gaffney?
Yes.
Member Rappaport?
Yes.
Okay. So, um, item seven A is an application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section twelve-point-one-point-five PD special permit of the zoning bylaw, forty-two to forty-four Third Avenue. Light Force Orthodontics is the applicant. Item seven B is an application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section one-point-five-point-one light manufacturing or processing plants of the Northwest Park Plan Development District bylaw, forty-two to forty-four Third Avenue. Light Force Orthodontics is the applicant. Item seven C, excuse me, is an application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section one-point-five-point-four hazardous and toxic materials, chemical use, storage, transport, disposal, or discharge of the Northwest Park Plan Development District bylaw, forty-two to forty-four Third Avenue. Light Force Orthodontics is the applicant. And lastly, item seven D is a discussion, application for approval of a minor engineering change, forty-two to forty-four Third Avenue. Light Force Orthodontics is the applicant. Welcome. Who do we have representing Light Force tonight?
All right, good evening. We have Chilton Griffin and Alex Ayers with Light Force Orthodontics. How are you?
Very well, thank you. Thanks for being here.
Mm-hmm. Thanks for having us.
So, um, I believe So I believe, I'm trying to think if you were here at the last meeting.
We were. We gave a presentation at the end of last, last meeting.
And I, I did watch that. I wanted to let you know that I watched it. I have the Mullen forms here that I signed so I can participate. Why don't you take a few minutes to update us on what's changed since that meeting?
Sure. Nothing has really changed with our intended use of the, the property. We have commenced construction of the interior alterations for the office portion of the facility. And we are underway with some of the other planning that's required for relocation of our operation out of the Cambridge facility, which is where we currently manufacture and have our office space, to the new Burlington facility. Other than that, we really haven't made any other updates. I'd be glad to further elaborate on and give some more background on what the company does if requested.
Well, we did hear a little bit about that the last time you were here. Other members want to get more of an update or more information about that? Everyone's good? All right. Okay. Staff, did you want to comment on anything?
Um, I don't have too much else to add. I mean, these guys are, can describe what they do a lot better than I can. But they are the people that are, having gone are the days of that awful, awful pink paste of moles in your mouth. So, for all of our children who will lead orthodonture work, or grandchildren, or whatever, in the future. So, and anyway, so they're a very exciting company, very much in line with other companies in Burlington, in terms of, you know, medical device, additive manufacturing, all of those wonderful things. So we welcome them to Burlington. They have, all comments have been included from the Board of Health and other departments, and we have a special permit ready to move on this evening. And at the last meeting, you guys gave them a pretty good response and said, let's get them up front and try to handle this quickly since we didn't have too many questions. But you certainly welcome any additional questions that those members that weren't here, or additional questions from members that were at the last meeting. There was special permits ready to go, and we support the use.
Okay. All right. Instead of going through the whole line of everyone here, because we all did have a little, a shot at this, well, except for me, a shot at this last meeting, is there anyone that wanted to ask some questions or make additional comments from the board? Just holler at. Everybody feels good? All right. I actually feel very comfortable with this as well. Is there anyone in the listening audience that would like to ask a question or make a comment? No? Okay. All right, then.
Want a motion to close the public hearing?
Yes, please, Ernie.
So made.
Second, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Npemba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Españo.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
So moved.
Okay. You want a motion to, motion to approve the request of three special permits pursuant to section 12.1.5 PD special permit of the Burlington zoning bylaw, of the Burlington zoning bylaw and section 1.5.1 Light Manufacturing and 1.5.4 Hazardous and Toxic Materials slash Chemical Use of the Northwest Park PDD zoning provisions to permit the operation of an orthodontic 3D printing and manufacturing firm by the name of Light Force Orthodontics for a property located in Northwest Park Plan Development District and the Water Resource District located at 42-44 Third Avenue, subject to the terms and conditions contained in Exhibit A attached.
Second to be, Mike.
Thank you.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Npemba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Españo.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, everyone, and welcome Light Force to Burlington.
Thank you. Welcome to Burlington.
I hated having that horrible goofy stuff in my head when I got my braces. So this sounds like a major improvement.
Yes, never again.
Madame Chair, looks like we might need to also approve a minor engineering change.
Oh, you're right. Thank you, Ernie.
Okay. Motion to approve the request for approval of a minor engineering change for property located at 42-44 Third Avenue to install a concrete utility pad with fenced enclosure and boulders, as well as crushed stone drip edge around the pad to collect stormwater runoff, as reflected on redlined site plan entitled Site Plan in Burlington, Mass., 42 Third Avenue, Lot 59, Burlington, Mass., prepared by the Land Design Services dated June 20, 1994, and revised to December 23, 2020 by R.J. O'Connell and Associates, consisting of one sheet, subject to the following revisions, terms, and conditions as printed.
Thank you, Ernie.
Welcome.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Paul.
Bye, Paul. I'm still awake.
Thanks, Paul.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Npemba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Españo.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And once again, welcome to Burlington.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, we are on item seven E, which is a continued application for approval of a site plan, 34 Cambridge Street, Five Below Incorporated is the applicant. Who is here representing Five Below tonight?
You can turn it back on.
I am here, Madam Chair. For the record, Attorney Mark Vaughn with Reuben Bronstein. Good evening.
Hello.
Everyone is well this evening. Here representing Five Below have a few folks here that are here that were at the last meeting as well. Chris Schwinnard, who is with Five Below, Tim Hayes, our civil engineer with Bowler, and I believe we have a representative of our architectural firm as well. I know that we had an opportunity at your last meeting to give a pretty detailed presentation, but just to hit the high notes again, Five Below is a retail operation looking to occupy the space formerly occupied by Outback Steakhouse and more recently approved as the Beer Works Restaurant, which never got off the ground at that location. But that's the, the spot that we're talking about. Five Below would be looking to occupy that space. As we discussed at the last meeting, they're looking to do a very modest addition in the back, 1,000 square feet in total size, that would allow them to meet their space requirements for what they need for, for new store locations. And I know we spent a lot of time at the first meeting talking about some of the benefits of this project that would result. I know that there was an abutter, Mr. Jack Kelly, obviously that we all know very well, that was behind the site that expressed some concerns about just making sure that noise and other issues were addressed. And I know that Edens, the property owner, had a pretty detailed exchange with him, and we shared that with Kristin to make sure that those elements could be reflected in any decision of the, of the board. But suffice it to say that I think that it's a very good story here in the context of, you know, the restaurant had seven rooftop units, older rooftop units on, on top of the roof for ventilation and whatnot. This is bringing it down to three rooftop units, which would be obviously a, a major reduction. But they'd also be newer units. So, you know, more state of the art in terms of, you know, noise attenuation and the like. So one question that did come up at the last meeting was the roof, the facade element that we're talking about at the, at the front. If the board recalls, the Outback has that kind of gable entrance feature there, which, you know, we would be eliminating and putting in a more traditional facade that's consistent with what you see along the, the other storefronts there. It is going to be the same exact height, so we're not increasing the height of that. Now, the architect did look at that because a comment was raised by Mr. Kelly, the abutter to the rear, as to whether there'd be any, you know, noise reverberation that would come off of that. And the architect's opinion is that that would not be the case. The rooftop unit is not located in close enough proximity to that facade element where the, the sound would bounce off and reverberate. So we're, we're confident there's going to be a significant reduction in sound that would be happening here. So, and then lastly, I know there were some questions raised about, you know, if we could share with the board some comparable square footages for other locations in the greater Boston region. I think the board just, you know, wanted to understand why it is that, you know, we need that additional square footage. And believe me, I don't think Five Below would be looking to do it unless they, they did need it. And, you know, I did share that with Kristin and the, the planning staff that they're, and it's on their website, that for new store locations, they require a minimum of 8,000 square feet. And it's typically in that 8,000 to 10,000 square foot range. So I shared with Kristin and, you know, the other stores in the area are Lowell, which is an older store, is 7,746 square feet. Saugus is 8351. And Everett, which is one of the newer stores, is 9,595. So this store would be a total of 8,500, 8515 in total, which is, is very much in keeping with that and certainly in keeping with what the, the new prototype is. So, so again, I appreciate your time, happy to answer any questions. But I know Five Below is excited about being able to, you know, locate here in Burlington and be part of the, the center. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mark. And as stated previously, I did watch that entire meeting, the last entire meeting, including this, and have signed the Mullen forms so that I can participate and vote on this matter. Kristin, would you like to fill us in a little bit, you know, fill out a little bit on what was discussed regarding Mr. Kelly's concerns?
Sure. So we have a draft decision. I actually, and when Mark mentioned it, there were a few conditions that were specific that agreed on by the applicant, the property owner, with Mr. Kelly, that I do need to add, that were some specifics about the dumpster, dumpsters and emptying and, and some sound concerns, which will be added. But overall, what we have in the conditions is a note to include signage in the dumpster locations permitting hours of removal pursuant to the general bylaws and associated penalties, a condition about lighting in the rear of the building to make sure it doesn't shine into adjoining residential areas, including any signage that may be in the rear of the building. And rooftop equipment to includes, include noise dampening and placed so they don't, you know, Mr. Kelly mentions the kind of bouncing off that front wall, which Mark mentioned that he spoke with at the property owner. It's just to, to place them appropriately or add additional sound dampening there. Right now, if you were, Mark, there's seven rooftop equipment pieces right now, and they're being replaced with newer equipment to three, right?
That is correct, yes.
And what you see up there now is the, you know, the vent systems, as well as, you know, the stuff that you see in terms of food, food ventilation and, you know, a lot bigger, noisier type of equipment. So it's very good that they're leaving, are putting new equipment in. One of the big things that we need to discuss and put in the conditions, what we do with everything at crossroads and multi-tenant centers, is really the understanding of employee parking management, especially in this corner, to make sure that those back spaces are utilized, that there's a safe route from those stores to those back spaces, that the property management, as well as tenant management, are overseeing the, where employees are parking, making sure they feel safe getting to their vehicles, whether it's in the back of the site or further out in the perimeter, not in that kind of prime customer parking spaces. So that's included in there as well. I think that's all I have right now. But I feel comfortable that we've included the, into the conditions, the discussion from the last meeting in terms of operations, and included Jack's comments as well. So there is a decision drafted for you.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to do the same thing with this, this item as I did with the last one. Are there any board members that would like to speak, ask questions, or make comments? Let me know.
Barbara, this is Bill.
Please go ahead.
Yeah, so I'm on the, I'm on the town website and trying to look for that list that the applicant provided with regard to the store sizes. And I've not seen it.
Bill, it was also email, I emailed it to you a few days ago. If you look for an email from me in your webs, in your email.
And what, what's the title of the email?
I'll look for it quickly.
And give me a date and time, if you don't mind.
I think it was in the preview to Kristin.
It was in the preview as well, which was sent on Tuesday night.
Tuesday night, which is-
Oh, actually, it's in the preview. It wasn't sent separately. It's within the meeting preview sent Tuesday night, which was the night.
Give me a second then.
Okay.
Go through that. I thought, I thought the applicant said it was on the website.
No, they, I'm sorry, they, they did email them to us. We included it in the meeting preview to you guys prior to the meeting.
So Tuesday, that's after the one about the Board of Appeals tonight, preview, got it?
Yep.
And there is a public record. So do I have to open up the preview?
Yeah.
Okay. And scrolling to, I read that. I didn't read all the way through it. So I'm at Leahy, hold on. Northwest Park 3D.
Well, Bill was looking through that. Are there any other board members that wanted to chime in with a question or a comment? So he has a chance to read that. No? Okay, Bill, you're back up.
Right. So I'm looking at that and, all right, Lowell, okay, got it. Lowell, so this Lowell, Saugus, and Everett. And when I'm on the Five Below website, I've got 20 stores in Massachusetts. And you gave me Lowell, Saugus, and Everett. Any reason why you picked that, the three, and you didn't give me like Danvers, or where else, Natick, or something like that? Did you just pick those three out?
This is Chris Schwinnard with Five Below. Those were the three closest stores to Burlington, Massachusetts. The thought process being that those, you might be more familiar with these locations being closer to Burlington.
Actually, my wife goes to the Danvers one. But so, yeah, do you have the Danvers one off top of your head?
Uh, no, but if you give me a moment, I can look it up for you.
Great, thanks. And maybe you can give me, so you got Lowell, Everett, you can give me Natick as well, maybe Hudson. I'm just kind of look at similar Dedham kind of towns that are similar to Burlington.
So that was Natick, Dedham, and what was the other one, first one?
Danvers.
Danvers. Very good. Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll wait on that.
Okay, thank you, Bill. I'd like to know, I want to turn this over to any members of the audience that want to speak. I'm hoping that Mr. Kelly is present, but also any other abutters or members of the audience that want to comment. Anyone?
Madam Chair, this is Brady. I'm not seeing any hands up or anything in the chat, and it doesn't appear that Mr. Kelly is on the call.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Then, as far as we know, Kristin, Jack is satisfied with this, correct?
As far as I know, yes. And we did actually send him a draft of some, some of the pertinent conditions that he was, wanted to discuss. So we assume we would have heard from him if, yet. And as I mentioned, as Attorney Vaughn mentioned, the correspondence between Jack and the property owner, he wanted to reflect some of that within the decision, which I do need to add.
All right. Well, I, I don't have any additional questions. So I think we are probably ready to move forward and close the public hearing on this matter. May I have a motion? have a motion?
Madam Chair, if you could just wait for the, if you could, we get the data from the, the applicant on the three that I requested.
So do you like, would you like to continue?
He said, he said, uh, well, so he said he'd have in a second, so.
Okay, would, no, would you like to continue, Bill, is what I'm asking?
Uh, I think you said he'd have it very quickly. So I think if we can get that information quickly, then we can probably uh, work at, work on that. But it all depends on the applicant when he can get that.
Um, it's actually taken me slightly longer than I anticipated, but um, I was able to get to uh, was this Danvers, which was seven thousand seven hundred and twenty square feet.
Okay. So if I, if I take those four, then this is on the higher side, right? It's in in the ones you have are in the seven thousand square feet, the one you asked before. So if that's what you can give me at this point, I'm I'm ready to vote, Madam Chair.
Okay, does anyone else have any final questions?
Is he going to close the public hearing?
I hope someone does.
Second.
Okay, thank you.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman in Pemba.
Yes.
Member Clark Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Españo. Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve across the Five Below and corporate applicant for approval of site plan application for property located at thirty-four Cambridge Street to permit the construction of a one thousand plus minus square foot addition to the underneath parking lot of the existing seven thousand five hundred and fifteen square foot tenant space to be utilized as an ancillary office and story area, area, modified, read it Paul, modified the primary building facade for continuity and customer access and eliminate the pre-existing non-conforming parking conditions as reflected in the site plan entitled Five Below Propose Retail Edition Thirty-four Cambridge Street, Burlington, Massachusetts, Middlesex County, Mass., prepared by Borla Engineering, dated November twenty-fourth, twenty twenty, consisting of five sheets site plan. The project is subject to the following terms, revisions, and conditions.
Second.
Thank you.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman in Pemba.
Yes.
Member Clark Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Españo.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
No.
Member Rappaport.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Thank you all for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Sure.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Okay, um, moving on, we are on item seven F, which is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section four point two point six point nine, fast order food establishment of the zoning bylaw, three ninety Cambridge Street, international trade network, doing business as Kebab Grill and Pizzeria, is the applicant. And who is here representing Kebab Grill? Is there somebody representing Kebab Grill?
Yes, this is Mohammed Ifan, um, on the.
Thank you, welcome. Um, okay. See. All right. Um, Kristen, do you want to start us off, or do you, do we want to hear first from the applicant?
Um, I would recommend we hear from the applicant on the type of business, the number of seats in the business, and talk a little bit about how, you know, takeout, delivery, kind of just nature of the business that you're proposing there.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Ifan?
Yes, hi. So this is going to, it was the existing pizza place before, known as Newton Cafe. Now we are just adding, changing the menu to be more like Mediterranean food. Um, show us salad, let the diet along with the pizza as well. So we had to add some uh, little more equipment to the menu. We added another small hood to the existing uh, we, uh, number of seats. I know the previous tenant was allowed uh, nine seats here because of the parking capacity outside is only twenty-four. Uh, but uh, most of the businesses in this plaza, they are total of five units. Uh, they usually close maximum by six P M. And you know, dinner hour, everything happens off. So I don't know if there's any rule to have more than nine seating allowed in this uh, property uh.
Um, how many seats were you seeking?
Uh, if we could do twelve at least, that would be good.
Okay. And can you give us some idea as to what percentage of your business you expect to be dining in, and what percentage you expect to be takeout? And let's sort of take COVID out of it, because we understand that for the next several months, that's probably not going to be the norm, and you'll probably be doing all this entirely takeout. But what is your model for the restaurant once things get back to normal?
I would say it's more like seventy-five percent or more will be still takeout and delivery, and uh, just seating will be less than twenty-five percent.
Thank you. Okay. And is this your first um, restaurant venture? Or do you own any other restaurants?
No, this is this one.
Okay.
Parking restaurants, uh, I, um, but to own my own is this one, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Um, Kristen, did you have any other questions or comments you want to make before we turn it over to the board?
Um, so this site is is a tight parking site. Um, I would recommend, so the previous tenant did have nine seats based on the parking availability. If we want to entertain the three additional seats to twelve, um, I think we can do that, but I would want to add a review period um, with those additional seats to make sure we're not having parking issues based on them. Um, especially, and I I guess my reason for entertaining the additional seats is is because the business is designed so much for delivery and takeout. Um, so it, you know, it might still work, but um, anyway, it's totally up to the board. But if we do increase the seating, I think we absolutely need a review period on parking utilization.
Okay, thank you, Kristen. All right, Joe in Pemba, would you like to start us off? And do you have any department comments?
I, I don't have any department comments. I'm not sure who has the department.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's right. Liz, do you have department comments?
Sorry. Um, so as far as department comments are concerned, um, we have very basic ones um, from um, Board of Health, this has their four comments um, that I will read into the record when we act upon open. So basically, it's very quick. So um, Marley, um, at the board calls, the applicant has submitted a plan review application, um, and approval condition has been sent to them. Um, Christine Mathis at the Board of Health, um, requires them to unfill a pre-demolition, pre-renovation inspection checklist um, with the Board of Health. Um, so that is from the Board of Health. And then, um, the Building Department, um, Building, um, Mark DiPaolo, new head of, um, the Building Department, said, um, that the permit will be required to um, comply with five twenty-one C M R A A D. So that's basically just the code for um, handicap accessibility. Um, other than that, the department has no objection. So those are the two um, comments that we have.
Okay, thank you, Liz.
Can I actually, just quickly, I had two, two things I wanted to say, I forgot. Um, just, we wanted to check on the grease trap, if there's a grease trap, or if they got a waiver from the Board of Health. Um, and then make sure that based on the change in menu, um, that there's enough odor control if they do decide to do more um, kind of fried food and things that um, would affect the neighborhood, so they're with additional odor control. So, and that will be the special permit.
Okay. So we, do we have an answer to that question? Do we know if the Board of Health has made a determination on that?
Oh, um, I'm not sure. This is opening, we're not going to vote on it tonight. I'm just wanting to throw that out there on the record for our discussion.
All right, thank you.
All right, I can't, um, Madam Chair, I can um, with very high confidence, um, state that um, the previous um, this, this tenant space was permitted not too long ago for another um, owner. Um, and I have to imagine that an odor control unit was um, required as part of that um, decision. I can double check on that, but I would, it would be highly unlikely for us not to have included that in the previous decision, just for everybody to be aware of.
Yeah, and I concur with Liz. I just want to make sure the applicant was aware of odor control measures that.
Thank you. So I'm going to mix it up a little bit and change our order up. So I'm going to ask Brenda if she would like to weigh in first this time. Brenda?
I'm going to have to find my mute button again. Um, no, I don't have anything to add. Um, you know, I think it's pretty straightforward, and um, I'm looking forward to some, some fresh tahini uh, in my future. So.
Okay. Bill Gaffney, do you want to jump in? Okay, we'll come back to Bill. Um, Bill?
Thanks, Madam Chair. My only comment or question would be um, if we were to go to twelve seats to parking, which has already been addressed. So uh, that's all I had. I'll wait till the next meeting to uh, to discuss that further, I guess.
Okay.
Thanks, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mike. Um, Ernie Covino?
Uh, just one question off the top of my head for the applicant. Um, do you have any plans to uh, have your employees and actually yourself, whoever, whoever is in the restaurant, working in the restaurant, park somewhere offsite? And I, I'm sorry, I forgot the name of the applicant, so I can't address them directly, but.
I think it's Mr. Ifan.
Yes, it's fine. Yeah, so basically, I know where I am at. Um, I just moved very close to the restaurant, like one minute walk from here, uh, at, at First Street and Valadica, which is maybe one minute to two minute walk. So I could just leave my vehicle there, no problem. Uh, this is more like a family owned business. My father, he worked here with me.
Okay, okay. So then probably the employee cars would be including ours offsite. So maybe that will give you an extra parking space to.
And um, the grease trap that we talked about is already in in the unit. It's been installed, and we also have the odor control, you know, installed as well.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Um, this is a, as you know, this is very difficult uh, retail space to accommodate uh, too much parking. So that was the reason for my question. I'll sit, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Um, Paul Raymond, do you have any questions?
No, not really. This is a, I see there are a lot of conditions there and so forth. I'm reading, since I didn't get this till five o'clock, when I finally get out of the mailbox. But no, I, it appears to me that it's been pretty thoroughly vetted, so.
Okay.
Good luck. This is one of those locations that we see fairly periodically. So I uh, wish the proponent good luck and just wish him success there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Joe, Joe in Pemba, do you have anything you'd like to ask?
Just really just the uh, same thing. It was going to be my comment was the parking, because I know last time we had uh, addressed the spot, the hair salon on the end actually showed up at the meeting and had sent all kinds of correspondence that they didn't, that they weren't going to have sufficient parking for their location. So I don't know if they're still there, um, if they are, if they've sent comments in at all, or have we heard anything from the other tenants in there? Because, you know, this is, it is a, it is an increase in the, in the seating in there. I just feel like there's going to be a, going to be overwhelm with the parking.
Um, staff, have we heard anything from any of the other tenants at this location?
Not that I'm aware of. Brady, you're list?
No, not that I'm aware of.
All right, thank you.
I assume they're aware of this. The other tenants, no? Would, would they have gotten notification of this at all?
Yes, this is a special permit, so they would have been notified. Yep.
Yep, okay.
Property, property owners are adjoining tenants, Liz? Because they wouldn't be property listed in in the.
So it would be, you're correct, Ernie, it would be the property owner.
Yes, so they may not, Joe, you're right.
Okay, well, we are not closing it tonight. Um, perhaps we should make the effort to reach out to the other business owners at that property so that they're aware before our next meeting.
I have the woman's email, and I can um, reach out to her and make sure she is aware.
Great, thank you, Jen. And of course, if there may be somebody on the meeting that we will get to in a couple of minutes as well. Um, Bill Gaffney, did you have anything you wanted to ask?
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair. No, actually, my dentist is in that Plaza, and every time I go in there, I do ask about how the parking is there. So they haven't, they haven't had a problem in the past with the other tenants. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'm going to see if there's anyone else here, and we'll see, we'll reach out to those other tenants. Um, I don't have any other questions. Um, I share the concern, but I also am, I'm inclined to try to accommodate, if possible, the additional seats. Um, knowing that the business owner will not be parking on site helps, but also I know that um, this has been a difficult site, and we want to be able to do everything we can to help this business succeed. And if a few extra seats um, helps it, this business owner succeed, I'd like to try to accommodate them if at all possible. So is there anyone in the listening audience that had any questions or comments about this particular item? All right, you know, when we are going to continue this matter, we are going to reach out to the other tenants in the space. Um, so I am looking for a motion to continue at this point.
Motion to continue this matter to the Planning Board meeting of February fourth.
Second?
Second.
Okay.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman in Pemba.
Yes.
Member Clark Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Españo.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes. Okay, thank you. And um, Mr. Ifan, so we will see you back here in a couple of weeks, and hopefully that will go quickly, because we've had a chance to ask questions tonight, but we'll also be hoping to hear from some of your neighbors as well.
Sure. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Are we on item F?
We are actually on items G and H on the, on page sixteen. Item G is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section four point two point two point three, passenger stations, landing fields, sites, buildings, and facilities for other public services, public work structures of the zoning bylaw, forty-one Burlington Mall Road, Leahy Clinic Foundation is the applicant. And item seven H is an application for approval of a site plan, forty-one Burlington Mall Road, Leahy Clinic Foundation is the applicant. So um, this is something we've been waiting to hear about for a long time. So welcome, Leahy Clinic, who is here representing Leahy tonight.
Um, Michael Slaj, a director of planning, design, and construction for Leahy.
Uh, we have Mark Vaughn, um, again with Reema Bronstein, representing Leahy as well. And um, I believe that we have Dr. Mac Creighton, who is uh, chair of the emergency department of Leahy, uh, that's on as well, I believe. Mac, you there?
Yes, yes, I am. Good, good evening.
We have a couple of other folks as well, uh, Madam Chair, that may speak. Tim Williams of Allen and Major, an engineering firm of record. And uh, we also have a, a Pelport consultant, uh, Jeff Strohwerf, that's with us too, if there's any questions. But uh,
Okay.
If, um, do you mind if I just jump in, or yeah?
Please do. We're, we're very excited for what you have to tell us tonight.
Correct. Uh, so we're very excited, pleased to be here. I know that this is something that the board has been anxiously awaiting, but uh, we're here in connection with applicants. we're here in connection with applications that have been filed for the relocation of the, uh, uh, helideck proposal, as well as a, um, very minor addition to the MRI, uh, facility that's at Leahy, which I can explain in a moment. But, uh, just very briefly, I I know you have some other items on the agenda, so that I want to give a long, drawn out history here, but just by way of background again, in connection with the the helipad, I think as the Board knows, years ago, um, mid-flight helicopter landings used to take place at TRW Field, uh, across the street, across Mall Road, in the recreation field that is there. Um, after that time, I know, um, that was not the the optimal location for it, uh, for a number of different reasons. It was moved on to the Leahy campus, uh, up near Kimball Ave, uh, where it exists today. And that has been where helicopter landings have taken place. So, uh, when we were back before the Board, uh, a few years back, when we were doing the, uh, campus expansion and the, uh, relocation of the emergency department to the rear of Leahy, along with the new cancer center and the additional square footage, uh, in in the rear of the site. We had thought that the the best location at that time for the helipad would be on top of the the roof of the building. So if the Board recalls, we actually got approvals at that point in time for the helideck to be built, uh, on top of the, of the building, uh, where, uh, the the ED is. Um, after a lot of internal discussions and communications with consultants and the like, Leahy has actually determined that the the optimal spot for this would be, as we're proposing it, uh, this evening and in the materials that have been submitted, which is, uh, immediately adjacent to the existing emergency room by way of a raised, uh, platform, uh, helideck, is what we're referring to it as, that would allow for, um, helicopters to land and then a, um, uh, patient to be brought immediately into the emergency department, which is obviously their, uh, point of destination, uh, to, uh, to begin with. So, um, again, uh, this is for mid-flight purposes, being a trauma center, it's important for for Leahy to be able to provide for this. It's not something that happens every day, obviously, but when it does happen, it's important. So, uh, we actually feel that this is a better location than the roof, uh, as Dr. Creighton can can mention, if it needs to be elaborated on, because it's not dependent upon elevators, anything that might be happening in that regard. So, um, so I think that, you know, we're very, uh, confident that this makes a lot of sense. Um, the the other, um, element of this proposal, which is, uh, perhaps not as exciting, um, but that's the, uh, slight bump out of the MRI, location, which is in the the front portion of Leahy, there you go there. Um, that, uh, peach colored, space would be approximately a 365 square foot addition, uh, to where that MRI building is today. And, uh, the reason for that is based on MRI and new equipment, magnetic, uh, residence equipment and and what goes with it. They need to have some additional space there to be able to accommodate it, uh, in the service area. So, um, again, it's a very minimal, uh, increase, 365 square feet, probably the size of a dining room, but, um, nonetheless, it's it's important for that functionality of, um, for for those, uh, testing elements. So, um, we have, um, I I thought it might make sense if I could just have Tim Williams with Allen Major just maybe quickly walk through the the site plan for, um, for the helideck. And, uh, Ben, I could either, you know, have Dr. Creighton, um, make a presentation or if you want to just get into questions. I don't want to, you know, I don't want to keep Member Raymond up past his bedtime.
Through the site plan and as you do so, can you kind of orient me and explain where this is in terms of, in in relation to the entrance that patients are currently driving up to, just so I can understand where this is located?
Sure, I can do that. Um, good evening, Madam Chair. Members of the records and lines of Allen and Major Associates. So this is the overall site plan for the, well, portion of the, um, the existing conditions of, uh, Leahy Clinic right now. The helideck is going to go essentially right next to the emergency room right here. This is the drive, uh, the loop that goes underneath the canopy to access the emergency room. So as Mark had mentioned, um, the helideck will come off with a gangway to a 55 by 55 square foot, um, platform that will be sitting right on what is now considered the contractor lot. So again, the Trump lot is located right here, Burlington Mall Road, the access drive, the loop road back to the emergency room parking lot. And so this, the the helipad will essentially be sitting on, um, what is the contractor lot. Right now, there are 17 parking spots. Those are not included in the overall parking count for the site. Uh, what we propose to do is stripe out that parking area per the, uh, Burlington zoning requirements. And as a result, we'll have 14 parking spots. Um, the only encroachment into the parking area that's out there today will be the columns coming down, this, uh, the stairwell and a landing pad, um, at grade. There are numerous utilities out there. I know the structural engineers designed these columns to kind of span some of those utilities. So it's really, uh, not encroaching into what's out there, uh, as far as the existing conditions go today. Again, it's a 55 by 55 pad. There is a safety fence that is around the, um, a safety net that is around the pad, the helideck itself. And again, this would be the gangway out to, um, what is the the patio out and around the ER. I'm not sure what else I can add. Uh, the 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 deck itself is about 18 feet off the ground, where the sidewalk passes underneath. Um, it's about 16 feet because there's about a three foot grade difference as you drive down into the, uh, into the, into the parking area. We will be incorporating, um, an oil water separator that will be tied into a closed drainage system. That closed drainage system was modified during the stilts project and there's actually a stub out there. So there's really essentially no real increase in impervious surface out here. So it's really a somewhat of a non-intrusive, um, uh, helideck design. Um, the MRI building itself, again, the Trump building, the MRI building, um, and again, Mark had mentioned it's about 365 square foot addition onto the building. The building itself, as it stands today, is, uh, 16 foot high, it's 16 feet tall. And the the addition itself is only going to be 12 feet tall. And as a result of, uh, the the work that needs to be done for this, we need to realign the sidewalk. Um, and the doorway does change, so we will be adding a little bit of a, uh, impervious surface associated with the new entrance. And the the sewer for the MRI building comes out and ties into a manhole that sits in the sidewalk. We're just going to have to, uh, provide a new sewer because that's, the addition is going to encroach into that. So that's really the the whole program in a nutshell.
Okay, thank you. Um, Kristin, did you want to add anything to that?
Um, not at this point. Um, we did have the Director of the Emergency Room at, uh, I think it was the DCM a while ago when we looked at this as a conceptual project. Um, and I thought it was very interesting to hear about the operations, um, kind of inside, outside and how that works. So I I would encourage that you give him a couple of minutes to describe operations there. Um, with that said, this is the opening and the hearing. Departments haven't weighed in. There's definitely some questions. We don't permit a helipad every day, not to say that it's, it'll be necessarily difficult. It's just, you know, permit helipads every day. Um, so we'll, um, certainly be continuing this item to the next meeting, um, working with departments. Um, but yeah, but anyway, I I think the inner workings of how this all works together is very interesting and would encourage listening to that, um, presentation.
All right. Well, I think that's the perfect lead in.
Hi, it's, uh, Mac Creighton. I've been Chair of the Emergency Department at Leahy for, I think, 15 years now. Uh, and we've certainly gone through a lot of changes. Uh, one of the more exciting ones is becoming a trauma center many years ago and then becoming a level one trauma center last year. You know, right now, the way that that we function is that if we're receiving a patient in by helicopter transport, uh, they have to land at our landing pad up on Kimball Avenue. And they really, they arrive to us at about 100 knots and then it takes them about 12 to 15 minutes to go that last quarter mile in an ambulance. And what we really want to be able to do is bring the helicopters directly outside the emergency department and and really very close to our trauma rooms where we can begin caring for the patients, uh, right away. And, uh, this will be a a major step forward for us. And we think it's better for the town of Burlington in the sense of landing in a in right outside our area, not up in a parking lot. It'd be safer. It's built and it's really designed to to be a helideck right outside the emergency department at the same level. So it's an advancement for us in patient care, uh, that that we're very excited about. And it's a, it's the end of a long story, as we mentioned earlier this evening, of landing up on the TRW Ball Field, et cetera. And, uh, we were very excited to proceed, if possible. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, um, we do not have any comments on this so far, what I'm being told. So, um, let us turn this over to the Board. I'm going to start with Mike Espo. Do you have any questions or comments?
Um, just a quick initial question. I know it's probably a tough one to answer, but something I'm curious about. On on the average, on a monthly basis, how often is the helipad used? I know it's different probably, but on the average, what what's the usage on something like this?
So, you know, right now, I think it's, uh, around once or twice a week. Oops, sorry, uh, that, uh, that we're using it. We don't expect a tremendous increase, uh, in volume. Uh, there might be a slight uptick because I think, uh, that it, the ease of use, if you will. But I would say that, you know, the the most we've seen is four landings, I think, in one week. Uh, so it's certainly not a an hourly occurrence.
Thank you. That's all I have right now, Madam Chair. Thanks.
Okay, um, Member Gaffney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, so I've got a couple of, um, got a couple of questions. Uh, there was a discussion about, uh, it, with the MRI building addition, you're going to lose some impervious surface. How much are you going to lose?
Uh, actually, we're not losing, we're actually creating some impervious surface, yeah, associated with the with the sidewalk. Um, off the top of my head, I don't know, it's not very significant. At the end of the day, I would say it's close to 300 square feet. Um, it's really, and it, and it, on the screen, you can see here's the edge of the existing sidewalk. We're really just bumping it out and reconstructing what is existing sidewalk now, and then again, uh, expanding that. I can get you that number, uh, for the next hearing, to be more exact.
And, um, my next question is, um, you're going to lose some parking, um, with the helipad? Or is that whole area now going to be off limits to parking? Can you park under the helipad?
Yes, yes, you'll you'll have the ability to park underneath the helipad. The, um, the, right now, there's 17 parking spots that are underneath the helipad. And those have not been counted in the overall existing parking count, um, through previous permitting efforts out here, whether it was the stilts project and the scopy suite. So what we're, we propose is, is, is now including the 14 parking spots that, um, are going to be restrained out here, that again, those parking spots will be restrained to meet the Burlington zoning bylaws.
Okay. Uh, maybe, uh, the next question I have is maybe to, uh, Steph. I mean, like you said, we we don't permit helipads that often in Burlington, right? Does it make sense that, uh, that Burlington has our own helipad consultant on this one? This is a fairly big deal. And you know, kind of things like, I know that stuff that 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 we may not have the expertise of helipad sound and and things like that, where it's coming in from where it was before, who's going to get the sound now, uh, things like that. It's probably probably the critical piece. The next question I had, what's happening to the helipad up on Kimball?
I can respond to that. Right now, there are no plans to do anything with the the pad. We're just going to abandon, we're going to make it secure and, um, and just leave it as is for now.
Okay, you're not, you're not going to put that back into green space right there?
Uh, that wasn't our intent right now. Um, but that's pretty much, that there, right now, not right now, that was, that wasn't our plan.
Okay. Um, and the only thing I just ask Leahy in general, you know, uh, you know, with this additional, uh, space, the addition that you're asking for in the the helipad, uh, have you guys considered, um, allowing, uh, Burlington residents, uh, free parking in the parking garage?
Um, I haven't, I don't have really the, uh, the authority to make that decision. I know it's been asked of administration before, so unfortunately, I would have to defer that to, uh, someone at the leadership level to be able to answer that question.
Can you have that for next time?
I can, I can bring that to the next meeting, sure.
Sure, yeah, just as we think about, you know, the gains of the the Leahy and, uh, you know, kind of reciprocal gains for the town on that. I I think you might, uh, see that favorable piece of it, uh, occurring.
Sure, I'll bring that up to leadership.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, I can mute myself. Thank you, Bill. Uh, to Rappaport, do you want to weigh in?
I just have a question out of curiosity. Um, should you access this either, you know, you can see the helipad referring to the the helipad, you know, via stairs or via the building? How, where do you put it down? How do you, like, how do you, is it, is somebody out there with a shovel? Like, is there a way to access that by vehicle or?
Nope, there's actually a ice melt system that's, uh, going to be supported from an internal skid in the building. There's also going to be a fire suppression system built onto the deck, um, that will be also be supported from inside the system, so in the building. So you won't need to get out there at all to include any of those items.
Understood. Um, in support of, uh, Member Gaffney, um, his statement about the of the old, uh, helicopter site, um, I would like to see that turned back into green space rather than just be here.
Okay.
I I would recommend that. Um, and also, uh, in support of his statement about the free parking, I'd be very interested to see what administration has to say about that as well.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brenda. Um, Ernie Cavino?
Thank you. Yep, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I am at least as excited as Leahy is about this finally, finally happening. I mean, we're talking 20 plus years, uh, looking at this, but, uh, other than that, um, so can you tell me, oh, has it been an increase in the number of trips since you became a, a trauma one center? Uh, can anybody answer that?
Yeah, uh, it's Mac Creighton. Uh, thank you for the question.
Thanks.
Yes, um, actually, as a level two trauma center, which we've been for, I think, close to 15 years, uh, we were actually functioning as a full adult trauma center. And the difference between level one and level two for us was really just academic output. In other words, the number of papers and some capacity issues. Uh, so there really wasn't a change for us in moving to level one as far as volume goes, because we already had the volume to qualify for a level one. Uh, and we were in fact busier than some of the big downtown hospitals.
Right, I I think I remember when I asked that question about, uh, trauma one, trauma two, it was, it was a paperwork difference, right, that I was told or something. Education paperwork, something like that. Um, can you stay with me for a minute then? Um, so this means that, uh, I'm not sure when they've been doing it recently, but I know Burlington Fire Department used to respond to that, uh, uh, helipad every time a helicopter leaning landed, because it's fire suppression system, everything here. Will that still have to happen at that location, do you know?
No, in in fact, um, the the fire department has been responding to our landings now, uh, up at the, uh, the Kimball Ave location. Uh, we're self-sufficient in that regard and the ambulance and, uh, the ambulances are brought on by by Leahy themselves. It's not, that's what about this now.
Okay, uh, along with that same fire department question, I I really can't picture it in my head, but is the, is the road in 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 front of the helipad, is that the, is that the access way for the ambulances into the ED?
That's, it it is, that's correct. Um, Tim, can you zoom in on that just a little bit? There you go. Yep. So, so where the current, where the cursor is, is approximately where the deck would be. And you can see the loop road right below and it turns up into the ambulance way.
With a, what is that? I'm sorry, I didn't.
Oh, that little, that little, um, magnifying glass that's on the screen, that's where the deck would be.
Okay, okay. Um, so, uh, Okay, okay. So I, you know, obviously, there are FAA restrictions and whatever that you have to abide by, I'm sure, with the helideck. So is, is there a way to, if a helicopter is leaning, does that prohibit the ambulances from using that entrance?
I'm going to take a stab at that answer, but then I'm actually going to defer it to Jeff, our helicopter consultant. We were, at one point, at the Kimball lot, at the Kimball Ave site, we were holding back traffic while the helicopters were landing. But we were given the okay by the FAA to allow traffic to proceed while the helicopter is landing. So we anticipate that being the same here, but we are going to confirm that with the FAA before we finalize everything, just to make sure there are no issues with allowing an ambulance to come in as a helicopter is landing. Jeff, have you, have you got any experience in that at all?
Yes, we do. We, traffic going by is not a problem since we're 18 feet above grade here. So any traffic that goes by is fine per the FAA. We've also filed all the necessary paperwork with the FAA for this landing area. So.
What we'll probably do, Mr. Quinno, is that we have obviously a 24/7 security. So we're, security's notified, correct me if I'm wrong, Matt, but the security's notified when a helicopter is coming in. And more than likely, we will have security personnel out there to hold back foot traffic because there is a sidewalk that runs along that way. So we will more than likely at least prevent foot traffic from going by because of the wash and so forth. But again, as Jeff said, we'll be confirming everything with FAA to make sure traffic won't be an issue.
Okay. I think, right. Okay. Thank you. I'm all set right now, Madam Chair.
So Ernie, I just wanted to say on behalf of staff and department, those are some of the, we have those same questions about circulation and landings. And I've asked and set up a meeting with police, fire, Leahy, and the helipad consultant to understand that a little bit better. If you're, you or any of the other members are interested a little bit more in the, the technical side of it, I can certainly invite you to that discussion.
Sure. That would be interesting. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ernie. Paul Raymond, do you have any questions?
Yes, a couple. As a matter of fact, it's similar to Ernie and I have been on the board so long together that we come up with the same questions. One was, you know, when I was up at that other site, they said every time that helicopter lands, the Burlington ambulance has to be there, the fire trucks or whatever. And I thought that was a, you know, an imposition on the town that was unnecessary, but they said that was the rules at that time. So it's my understanding that that won't be necessary now because I'm around town a lot and those fire trucks and ambulances are going all the time. So we don't need to, you know, add any further burdens if we don't have to. So that was one. I have another question. I unfortunately, on occasion, have driven myself to the emergency room. And one of the nice things about Leahy is you can just pull down that back driveway around, right underneath, and it's like 10 steps to the desk. And by the time you can hardly blink your eyes, there's a nurse or somebody down there to take care of you. And as I'm looking at this, the next time I have to go there, can I still go around and drive right around the front? Because it looks like this road, I'm calling it a road, the street, the driveway or whatever, is coming right down into that area that I used to pull into. And that's, that's, that's my question. Well, those are, those are two questions.
If I, if I could, through the chair to Board Member Raymond, so we aren't going to be modifying that access that you're talking about. You'll still be able to pull right up in front of the emergency room. And we're not impacting that by virtue of this project. And just, just to clarify, I don't know if it came through with what Michael Slager was saying about the, any burden to the Fire Department. So I think that used to be the case where Burlington Fire would respond when a helicopter was, was landing over at Kimball, and then certainly back when it was landing at TRW Field. But that hasn't been the case over the past few years, from what I understand. But regardless, I mean, certainly where we're locating it here, as proposed, isn't going to burden the Burlington Fire Department at all. But.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Joe? Joe and Pemba?
Unmute myself here. So, yeah, it's certainly been a long time coming. I think when this first started, I was on the board of selectmen. It was a long time ago. It's nice to see it come full circle and be finished. But the question I have is, the approach to the pad, is it always going to be from the same direction?
Jeff, do you want to respond to that?
Yeah. Typically, yes, it is. They try to land into the prevailing wind. So in our case, they're actually going to be landing on this drawing from the right to the left. And then they'll take off to the left further. So.
Okay. So I guess what I'm more concerned about is the flight pattern in and out. Is it, is it typically going to be coming, you know, do they have the ability to decide to not go over home? Because in one direction, you're looking at the highway, you're looking at, you know, nothing but industrial area. The other direction, you're looking at homes, you know. So I'm, you know, my, my concern is that the flight pattern is never going to be over the homes, and it will always be over the industrial area or, you know, the highway.
Yeah. All the pilots these days do what they call fly friendly, which means they try to not fly over any neighborhoods or houses that are nearby their landing areas.
Okay. So that, so that is their, that's kind of their thing anyway.
Yes. And it's at their discretion.
And it's, well, clearly, yeah, I mean, it would have to be, I guess, right, you know, given conditions and things like that. I would hope that, you know, given everything equally, they would always come in from a direction not over the residential areas, you know.
Correct. And they'll do that as much as possible.
Right. Okay. Thank you. That's.
You're welcome.
Okay. Thanks, Joe. That was actually a question I had, so I'm glad that that was clarified. I have a question. Must have misunderstood something because you said that the helipad is 18 feet off the ground. And yet, I also thought I heard the doctor say that now patients will be coming in at grade. So.
So the emergency department's actually on the second floor, if you will.
Oh, it is? Okay.
And so they're coming in at the same level as the emergency department. Perhaps that's the best way for me to say it.
So when you drive in, you're driving into the second floor?
Yes, you come up a ramp.
I did not realize that. Okay. All right. So how close is this to the nearest parked car? And do we need to worry at all about parked cars getting too close to this pad? Or is that not a concern?
Tim, if you can go back to the site plan, we can look at the lots that show the cars. There we go. So that lot right there, as Mark mentioned, is actually a contractor lot. That's where our general contractors who come in for service in the building would typically park. And we're, we're not even, it's going to be gated off, so nobody else could park in there. There will be signs letting people know that there is a helideck there, and, you know, they park it there at their discretion. But if you, if you go to the other drawing, Tim, that shows the parking area to the right, it is a substantial distance between the, I think the overall site plan would be better.
Which one?
The overall site plan.
Okay, sorry.
That's okay. Yeah, keep going. Yeah, right there. If you can scroll up on that just a little bit. So, I mean, this, this drawing doesn't show the actual deck. I mean, if Tim will probably, if you can put the cursor right there. So you can see Lot 5 and Lot 6, they're considerably a bit ways away. The other parking spots adjacent to the deck are going to be the ambulance and any emergency personnel that would be coming into the ED.
Okay, thank you. Those were my only questions. I'm, I'm very pleased to see this moving forward. I think it's a big benefit for your patients. So I'm just really glad that it's, it's happening and looking forward to getting it actually permitted and built.
So.
So is there anyone here that's listening in and would like to ask a question or make a comment regarding this? No. Okay. All right. Staff, did you have any other things you wanted to ask before we continue this?
No, as mentioned, you know, I think we'll be having a meeting with them just about some more technical aspects of circulation, traffic, and as well as the flight pattern and some details about FAA requirements and building code requirements and kind of how they meet and don't meet together. So if anyone would like to be notified of any of those discussions, I'm happy to share that information. But we also will summarize and report back to you at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. All right. I'm looking for a motion to continue this matter to the planning board meeting of February 4th, 2021.
Is this a public hearing?
Yes, we asked if anyone wanted to speak. Is there, did you see someone who wanted to?
There was some, but maybe, I thought somebody had talked earlier about being, being in the neighborhood there, but maybe they're not there anymore.
Well, let's give them another chance. Is there anyone who would like to speak on this matter? Make yourself heard. All right, we'll move on. But if there is anyone listening that hasn't had a chance to speak, we will be taking this matter up again at our February 4th meeting.
Right.
So they'll have another opportunity. All right, I'm looking for a motion.
Madam Chair, we might like to make a motion to continue these matters to the planning board meeting of February 4th, 2021.
Second. Thank you.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Npemba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
For Cavino.
Yes.
Member Aspejo.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
So moved.
Okay. Thanks, everyone.
You all, appreciate it.
Thank you, everybody. We appreciate your time.
All right. Next, on our agenda, I would like to have a motion to take Items 7I through 7M together for discussion purposes.
So moved.
Seconded by Mike.
Thank you.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Npemba. Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Cavino. Member Aspejo.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Items I, J, K, L, and M are all for 174 Middlesex Turnpike, and the Nord Blum Company is the applicant. Item 7I is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section 1, excuse me, 12.1.5 PD Special Permit of the Zone Bylaw. Item J is an application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section 1.6.7 Discharge from Manmade Structures Into the Wetlands of the Northwest Park Plan Development District Bylaw. Item 7K is an application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section 1.7.5 Accessory Health Club Located Entirely Within a Commercial or Residential Facility of the Northwest Park Plan Development District, excuse me, District Bylaw. And Item L is an application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section 1.7.6 Dry Cleaning Drop-Off and Pickup Only of the Northwest Park Plan Development District Bylaw. And Item M is an application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section 1.7.12 Garage Space or Spaces and/or Attached or Detached Structures Above and Below Ground and Underbuildings for Parking of the Northwest Park Plan Development District Bylaw. There's a mouthful. Okay.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. For the record, Robert Buckley, Raymond Bronstein. I have with me this evening representatives of the applicant, as well as our engineering and site consultants. And we just summarized from the last meeting. We walked away with a number of points, which we hope to quickly walk the board through this evening because of your agenda in the late hour. But break it down into four categories. First, I'd like to clarify that while the plans show a retail pad at the corner, we're not proposing a retail use at this time. We acknowledge that we'll be coming back when we have a, an applicant or a tenant to use it for that site. But we wanted to show the board that it is our intent to activate that corridor, that corner, so that the board has a picture of what the long-term vision of that corridor is. So while it's shown on the plan and it's actually a rendering of it, that is not necessarily what it's going to look like, or what the use is, or how it's going to function, but that corner is going to be activated. So we just wanted to advise the board of that. Second that came out of the meeting was, how does the Lifetime Fitness and this site work together? And we'll address that this evening, which I think is going to be a tremendous amenity for the residents of this multifamily residence. The third is the, the proposed common that is going to be actuated and built during this phase, about how we see that fitting into the long-term vision for the park, as well as, again, a tremendous amenity for those residents and the residential residents, as well as the commercial residents in the area, because it will be a flexible, activated amenity. And finally, we did have some concerns with respect to a right turn or an exit on the Lifetime Fitness site that we have met with the Public Safety Officer of the Police Department, and we have some, as well as the town engineer, we have some resolution, I hope, of that. And we would like to present these conceptual plan to the board for their information and any input. With that, I'll turn it over to Todd, who can walk, walk the board through those responses.
Thanks, Bob. For the record, Todd Fremont Smith, Norblum Company, great minds think alike. I was just about, it's the same thing. So let me see if I can get the system to work here.
Come on, Todd. If, 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 member of, computer, you should be able to make that work.
I got it. I got it. Hold on a second. Every system is different, Bob. Can you guys see the beginnings of a slideshow? Can you see the slideshow? Great. Brady's nodding. Thank you, Brady. So as Bob said, we're just going to recap what will be said on January 7th. I know some of the members were not present. We hope all is well with what they were dealing with. And we know that they probably have watched this, but we'll just quickly go through the team. We are partnering with Lifetime Fitness, next door. Lifetime Fitness has a really unique residential concept that they're deploying across the country called Lifetime Living. And Eric Paget is here, he's a director of real estate for Lifetime. He's here tonight to discuss that in more detail, which is what we promised at our last hearing. And then, of course, Scantech, the well-known Boston architect, Larry Richmond is on the phone, BSC Group, everyone knows Frank, but he's not the guy who does the work. It's really Marusa Valentino, Emily Derrick, and Moic Hall on landscaping, and then Bob and myself, the team. The site is 174 Middlesex Turnpike, so that is the vacant parcel of land at the corner of Middlesex and Fourth Ave, as we discussed last on the 7th. And it's really a great site for, we think, housing because it's within easy walking distance to Third Ave, it's adjacent to Lifetime Fitness as a club, and it allows us to really extend the retail energy and the residential energy north south through the park. The proposed design, which we reviewed on the 7th, is clearly a residential form as opposed to an office form. But we are, these are the early massing diagrams. This is not real architecture, but we think it's going to be an appropriate use in this mixed-use master planned zoning district. The site plan, you'll see bottom right on the plan, the residential form, as the board knows, these buildings are much narrower than about half the depth of an office building of 65 feet rather than 120. So you see that, that allows us the ability to put courtyards, open air courtyards on top of the parking level and create outdoor spaces within the project itself. And then I'll just draw to your attention the adjacency of the proposed residential project with Lifetime Fitness. And that's really why we are, we are doing a joint venture with Lifetime Fitness. It'll be a long-term JV. They will be helping It'll be a long-term JV, uh, they will be, uh, helping us design and program the building. Nord Blum Company will manage the building and then they will have concierge personnel in the building that tie the two uses together, and it's literally a two-minute walk between the residential, uh, 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 use and the, and the fitness use. And then, as you can see, our master planning is centering around this new opportunity because the parking goes inside the building, it frees up green space that we can, instead of building a parking garage, which we had previously, uh, talked about, we're proposing a commons, uh, which would tie this whole neighborhood together as was discussed on the, on the 7th, and Monique Hall from BSC can run the board through a little bit more detail on her thinking about that. So with that, I wanted to introduce Eric Paget, who is, uh, in Minneapolis, he's dialed in from Minneapolis, he's at the headquarters of Lifetime Fitness, and as I said, is the director of real estate, and he has agreed to tell us a little bit more about Lifetime Living from their vantage. Eric, I don't know if you are here, I hope you're here.
I am, Madam Chair, thanks for, for having me. Uh, Todd, thanks for the introduction. Uh, hello from Minnesota, as they say. Uh, and, uh, but we're, we're excited really to be back talking to the Burlington Town Board again. Uh, we, we, we really appreciate, uh, the welcome that we've received, uh, from the Lifetime, uh, Club when we opened it back in 2017. We're really happy, uh, with how we've been embraced by the Burlington community. And so that makes us want to expand our healthy way of life ecosystem in the town. Uh, and what's interesting to us is we, we, uh, have found Burlington to even be a stronger community, uh, to recreate than, than what we originally forecasted. And so this allows us to, to want to expand our ecosystem, and then all the, the strong development that's happened in Northwest Park makes this opportunity to bring Lifetime Living to Burlington really a top priority for us. And to Todd, uh, and the Nord Blum Partners, uh, thanks for working with us, we, we really appreciate the partnership over the years. So the vision of Lifetime Living is really to integrate our healthy way of life brand promise to our res, to the residential real estate market. And we do that by designing a well-appointed, connected, modern home while leveraging the, the world-class amenities we have at our club. And so the club, which is about 500 feet from the front door of this project, really becomes, uh, one of our key amenities. And so what is Lifetime Living? Well, we purposely designed it to promote healthy living with unmatched design, short life, uh, residences and conveniences that all those with active lifestyles demand, then we tailor that concept to each of our local communities. So every, every, everything we design within this building, uh, and even around the building, it's all really built around our healthy way of life philosophy. And as we all know, the last 10 months have been, been tough, and personal health and wellness should be a top priority. Todd, can you, uh, please? So what does it mean to live at Lifetime Living? This, this graphic kind of shows how we envision our residents live, uh, every day, and we really just focus our projects around, uh, pretty pillars, I call them, mind, body, and rejuvenation. So using, uh, your home as your base, our units are going to have spacious living areas, calming, relaxing, and warm finishes. And then with the club, just 500 feet from the front door, our residents can use all of the things at, at the club, like they can hit the group fitness classes, they can treadmill, they can grab a healthy meal at the next cafe, uh, they've got bodies, water, uh, pools and indoor and outdoor pools at, at the club, spa and salon services, or really just, you know, using the club to connect with the Lifetime community. And critically, uh, you know, as part of the home, the project, we, you know, we talked about rejuvenation and recovering your home is a top priority in our designs, and we focus that in our design of our bedrooms and private spaces in the units. Uh, next slide, Todd. So this is a, a list of kind of some of the key amenities and touches that we, we think about when designing for healthy living. So whether it's offering, uh, purified air, filtered air for all the units, wood plank flooring, uh, instead of carpet, and that's a focus on keeping allergens, uh, you know, reducing the amount of allergens that you have in, in your home. Uh, it's creating large natural service, uh, countertop, so it is good for healthy food prep, uh, or to blackout shades in the bedrooms to help, uh, to help improve your sleep. Uh, those are all things that we talk about and, and think about as we think of healthy way of living. So we're also in, in, in the project finding to implement of our Lifetime work concepts uh, in some of the amenities areas. Um, and, you know, we, we do that because there's just really a growing demand for better work, home amenities, uh, in, in, in these projects. But also note that every member or every resident of the, of the Lifetime Living project is a member of a Lifetime Club. What that means is they have access to all of the Lifetime Fitness clubs across the nation, and that's all included within your rent. Uh, you have 152 clubs across the U.S. Uh, next slide, Todd. Are, are you to redesign with energy flow in mind? Uh, we talk about Zen a lot here at Lifetime, and all of those are really, uh, feel both spacious and cozy, and we try and focus everything on healthy living. So this, this slide here shows some of the interior fit finishes, one of the projects I have under construction right now. Similar interior concepts or, or, and design elements are being planned for this project and in discussion with Nord Blum and the design team. Some of the unique elements within the units, every, every bedroom, whether it's a one-bedroom or two-bedroom unit or et cetera, every bed can fit a king-size bed, every room can fit a king-size bed. We're going to have the latest innovation in smart home technology, uh, and all that technology then ties back to the clubs. So if you're in a unit, it's really easy to, uh, contact the club, have the concierge set you up with your spa appointment or your spin class tomorrow, or, uh, you know, or even a chiropractor. Uh, we've also highly focused on large expansive kitchens, uh, which we believe are the heart of the homes. And again, we're really trying to make it feel like a resort or retreat inside your home. So we currently have, uh, a couple of Lifetime Living projects under construction. Uh, flip to the next slide, Todd. I've got three, two under construction. Our first one will open in Coral Gables, Florida. It's a large 500-minute project. It'll also have a, a 70,000 square foot Lifetime Club integrated, vertically integrated into the project. Um, and that's, that, uh, fits within that kind of submarket. There's a lot of dense urban housing in that area. Uh, the second one in the middle is Green Valley, it's Henderson, Nevada, very similar in scale to, uh, what we're, we're, we're thinking about in Burlington. It's a 49-unit, uh, multi-family project with parking underneath, and it's directly across the parking lot from our Lifetime Club. That one will open, uh, in the fall of this year. We're also planning a larger project in Dallas, uh, big town area. But, you know, the key thing, you can see there's, there's quite a few differences between each project. We really try and tailor our design and even interior and exterior to the markets we're in. So again, I want to, thanks for the opportunity to, to, to share a little bit about Lifetime Living, and, and appreciate the, the warm welcome we've received in Burlington over the last couple of years. Uh, we look forward to continuing to work with you guys and working to, to, uh, further this, this project opportunity.
Great, and thanks, Eric. And, and just for the board, because I know the board is always concerned about, you know, that's a great story, but what happens long-term? This is a long-term hold for both, both of us. Uh, this is a joint venture. Uh, Nord Blum is going to be managing the building and doing all the maintenance, so all the management is local, as you know, on-site. Uh, Lifetime Fitness is going to be doing the leasing and the marketing. So they're going to bring the, they're going to bring the building to life and bring it, bring it to, to the Lifetime way of life, but the, you know, all the landscaping and the snow plowing and the trash removal and all that stuff, it's going to be done by us. We get the fun stuff, they get the fun stuff, we get the, we, that's, I, I know that the board sometimes is concerned about that. I wanted to transition to this commons concept that the, again, because the parking is inside, most of the parking is inside the building, um, we freed up this, Frank and his team have freed up this green space, um, which we're calling the Fourth Ave Commons, and, uh, just as we have at Third Avenue, the Third Ave Green, uh, we're, we're proposing the Fourth Ave Commons, the Commons would be about three times as big as the Green at Third Ave. Um, and I know Monique, um, Hall at BSC wanted to talk just a little bit about, you know, what, what that could be and what, what we think it should be, and I just, she didn't get into the landscaping, but again, we're thinking this is a public space, and we, I'll talk a little bit more about this in a minute, but that we would program this space and bring it to life. But if, if we have Monique, it could be great if you could just talk a little bit to this slide.
Thanks very much, Todd. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, my name is Monique Hall, I'm a landscape architect with BSC Group, so I'm in great company with Frank and Marissa and Emily. Very pleased to have the opportunity to work on this project. I also had the opportunity to work on Third Ave and Huntington and, um, uh, name escapes me right now, uh, other projects on Third Ave. What's exciting about the public commons is it really ties into the Lifetime, uh, Fitness lifestyle, um, whereas there is lots of activities to do indoors, this provides active opportunities outside. Um, as Todd has mentioned, it is three times the size of the commons on Third Ave. Um, there is a perimeter path around the public commons, it's an eighth of a mile, so eight laps around the path gives you a mile, uh, worth of exercise. Um, we really envision this is a park area to be used by users of all ages, young and old. It, it, it is public, so we really see, um, we really see the residents in the new housing taking advantage of it, but it's also open to the public. Um, and you can see from this image, there is public parking available, there's also seating, there will be five park benches and, uh, two picnic tables available. The picnic tables are kind of tucked to the right of the image that you're looking at, in, in, in amongst the trees. Let's go to the next slide.
Perhaps a public sculpture.
Perhaps a public sculpture throughout, throughout the site. So this image on the top left corner shows what that site furniture might look like. We think metal is, uh, very durable and requires very little maintenance. The top, the first image is what a picnic table might look like, and here you see, you know, a family obviously brings their lunch and enjoys the outdoors. Um, the second image is what the benches might look like, so, uh, for our aging populations, we know that backrest and armrest are very important. There's little side tables, so you can bring your bottled water, your coffee, your tea, kombucha, whatever beverage that you're bringing to refresh yourself outside. The next two images directly below show that perimeter path. We think it needs to be wide enough to accompany, um, uh, people going in both directions. So we see, uh, young lady jogging, we see families riding bicycles on that path. The next two images below that show what that sign, uh, corner might look like. So this will be a field stone wall, this is repeated throughout the site and resonates with the field stone walls that are existing on Third Ave. Um, and then to the right of the page, we start to get into some of the images of what the building might look like. The top right-hand corner is the courtyard amenity terrace at the Huntington, so very similarly, the new housing may have some outdoor areas that has like chaise lounge seatings, uh, or grill areas or, um, tables so you can enjoy your meals outside. So whereas this is definitely private and the spaces are very close together, we envision the public commons areas having spaces that are further apart, so you can have a little more open space around you, uh, versus what's provided on the rooftop decks. And then the bottom three images, um, we can talk about, uh, as we move down into the presentation, but this is representative of what that front entrance might look like at the, uh, residential building. Uh, we envision the front area being a drop-off area, um, uh, for residents, for package deliveries, for meal deliveries, for grocery deliveries. And rather than having an asphalt paved area, we really see that as being pedestrian oriented, so we're thinking that, uh, we could do some nice concrete unit pavers, bollards in the far right-hand corner would delineate the sides of where vehiculars are allowed and provide safe passage for pedestrians up against the building. And then on either side of that front entrance plaza, we're proposing a, a tree box just to kind of define the plaza edges. Next slide. And then I think I want to turn it back over to Todd, and he can talk about some of the existing activities that have gone on, uh, along Third Ave and how that might, uh, play into the public commons. Todd, I think you're on mute. Todd, I think you're muted.
Sorry, all these systems are different. Um, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So we do spend a lot of time, in fact, we have dedicated staff at Nord Blum that are tasked with programming public spaces, and so we, we do use these spaces, that's a little bit of, that's not a class, I'm going to join, and Bob Buckley might join that class, but, um, if I could just keep going here. Um, this is, uh, I do spin classes, uh, we do outdoor concerts at Third Ave, and that's a very small space. I think the Fourth Ave space will allow us to do larger venues. We like to talk to, um, you know, we'd like to think about maybe a farmer's market on Fourth Ave, if that's possible. Certainly, we're going to be reaching out to the Sculpture Committee, we're behind on our commitments to bring public art into Northwest Park, but it's something that we still want to do, and that's a great location for it. Um, so again, just some images, just that we try to bring these spaces to life and not have them just be, uh, boring, um, open spaces, but, but have some fun with them. Uh, member Gaffney, just getting into some of the comments, had a good question that Frank DePietro was going to address, which was, could you summarize the differences between the formerly approved office building and the proposed housing building? And Frank put together this chart, and if he's on, maybe he's the best guy to talk through it.
Sure, so, good evening, for the record, I'm Frank DePietro. I'm the guy Todd noted, it doesn't do any work, but Monique and Marissa and Emily, and if I go off track, one of those will jump in and put me back on the rail. So, uh, with that being said, um, what I did was, as you probably will recall, uh, in 2016, we had a, uh, office building, 240,000 square foot office building, uh, approved for the, the site. And then what I wanted to do here was sort of take the data from the approved plans for the office, uh, and then compare that to what we're posing right now. It's basically a less dense project, if you will. So, if you remember, the, uh, office had a very large garage, so the building size, if you looked at it when it included the garage, about 4,000 square feet. Um, the proposed building with the parking underneath it for the residential, the housing is about 254,500 square feet. If you take out the parking structures in both of them, the office was about 240,000 square feet, and the residential's about just over 240,000 square feet. In a similar way, uh, as you would expect, the office had much more parking, again, there was a total of 855 parking spaces. Uh, we're proposing, uh, toward it, 91 spaces, and that includes the, whatever the retail's going to be. It also includes the parking under the building. Just as an aside, if we were to follow the parking, uh, requirements, maximum parking in the PDD, we could put in, up around 258 parking spaces, 346, um, no, 348, 346 for the, uh, residential, another 12 for the retail. Um, the parking in the front, which is the one that's most visible, uh, we had about 179 spaces in the office, we're down to 102, including that retail area. Open space is still at least 30%. When, I know in the office and also here, there's been some discussion how important the landscaping bar, uh, buffer is along Middlesex Turnpike. So looking at the buffer, if you remember, as you go from north, from Fourth Ave down, uh, north on Middlesex, the buffer gets wider. Under the original office, we were 22 feet wide roughly at, uh, where Fourth Ave is. We got up to about 56 feet by the time we got near where Lifetime Fitness is. Now we've increased that to about 40 feet at the, uh, corner and to 58 feet. That adds about 3,300 square feet of additional green space from about 1290, uh, 12,900 to about, uh, 16,200. And then we didn't have any of the public common. If you look at the, the proposed public common that we, that we have along the driveway at Lifetime, that's going to be about 37,000, uh, plus square feet. And roughly just the green space along Middlesex Turnpike and that common is about 23% of the entire, um, site that we're looking at. Plus, we've got the landscaping along, uh, either side, all along the building and within the parking lots. With that, I'd be happy to turn it back to Todd or do something other more interesting. We should talk. Maybe we talk about the driveway?
Yeah, sorry, I was on mute again. The other, the other meaningful comment that came out of the, the first hearing was the traffic concerns about, about Lifetime Fitness driveway on Middlesex Turnpike. So this is the, this is not the main access road at the traffic light at Fourth Avenue, but rather the, the, the small curb cut directly on Middlesex Turnpike. And it was noted that people were coming out of this driveway and turning the wrong way against oncoming traffic. So Lifetime socialized that in their organization and they agreed something should be done and it would be done as part of this project. And Frank, I don't know if you want to just describe?
Sure.
The idea.
So this is a very conceptual plan, but the, the idea would be we would essentially insert a directional island curving in the middle of existing driveway that would limit the ability to either enter, taking a right turn to going northbound on Middlesex Turnpike into the site, crossing the southbound traffic or coming out, taking a, again, right turning and then crossing over the, to the northbound traffic and southbound traffic. This is, we've had discussions with the Traffic Safety Officer, with the Foreengineering folks. We've had supplemental discussions with them. We're going to be fiddling with this a little bit to basically sort of work out some of the finer details. But a couple of the items would be, there'll be a crosswalk that goes from one side to the other. We're back and forth about whether that'll be a raised crosswalk so that the island will be entire, whether that will be a protected crosswalk. Like if you go to Third Avenue, coming out onto Middlesex Turnpike, there's a, a crosswalk that's at grade with the pavement, but this pavement is curving on either side of that. We're working out that. We're working the final details. I think that in the discussions and the staff, the planning staff was there, in the discussions, the, I think the town members, the technical folks were in favor of this being implemented at this point in time. Along with this, there would be sort of traffic training. Besides signage, the folks at Lifetime have the ability to basically communicate very well with this people and where they're going to be going and how they should be going out from the driveway. So this will be refined. We're going to work out the details with the town staff, involve the planning staff in this as well, but that's just sort of where we're at with this. We will address this issue. And Todd, take it away.
I think that's the end of our presentation for tonight.
So Madam Chair, we'd welcome any questions from the board.
Okay. I am actually going to jump in with one question first before I turn it over to the board. How is this going to impact our senior housing, which I think is probably going to be in about 22 or so units? I'm not exactly sure how many units this building is, but it's probably going to be somewhere in the 20 to 23 units that are for our moderate income senior housing. And I'm wondering how this is going to affect their rents. I think it sounds like a fabulous living situation. It sounds like someplace I'd love to live, but I don't know if that's going to impact the rent for seniors.
Do you want to respond, Todd, or do you want me to?
Sure. Or, or Todd Nordblom, if you're on, you're closer to this part of the, the business than I am.
I, I am happy to jump in, Madam Chair, Todd Nordblom. So the, the question had been raised and I think it's a relatively straightforward answer in that the rents, as we are talking to the town about related to affordability, but specifically the senior affordability are set off of medium income levels. And so they're, they are not related to in any way the market rate for a given apartment project. So in effect, regardless of the, the quality of the product and which we envision will be, will be high or will be a good quality in this location, the, the rents, the senior affordable rents will, will be unchanged.
And they'll still have access to all those additional amenities?
That, that is correct, that, that they would have equal treatment in, in terms of the, the members. And, and it is 167 units. It's 23 affordable units would be allocated or 14% within this project.
Those are some lucky seniors.
Can't wait to grow up.
All right. I will reserve any other comments I have. It just, that was the first thing that popped into my mind. I wanted to see how that would affect them. Staff, would you like to add anything before I turn this over to the board?
Not much at this point. I think the, what the, the left turn was an issue, is an issue on Middlesex Turnpike. And we fixing that as part of this, I think is critical. I like that we're finally, we're talking about the green and activating that space. As you know, as I mentioned at the last meeting, kind of that activation in and around the building and where this presentation is, I think is definitely heading in the right direction and activating space with benches and art and pathways and landscaping. What we have asked, asked the applicants is to make sure that all our civil drawings are kind of getting at that point as well. So with that and new civil drawings, I think we might have some more input from the departments prior to our next meeting. So anyway, just everything evolving at that same pace, because I think the conversation is certainly evolving. I think we're getting there. It's just been some big changes since our initial application, so, which is great.
Yeah, and I can, I will say, Madam Chair, that your staff has kept us on our toes on this one and, and acted with some incredulity to the, the initial concepts and we, we had to go back and recheck our thinking and step it up. So we hear you, Kristin, and we'll make sure that all this, all these nice things are on AutoCAD and submitted to your office for approval.
It's good. We're going in the right direction. It's just, we have to tighten up everything on the backend too. So, but anyways, at this point, I, I guess I'll reserve comments, listen to the members, their comments and continue.
Thank you. Joe, why don't you start us off?
Actually, I mean, I, I think all my questions have been asked. I mean, have been answered. I, I I love the project and I, I think it's, you know, I think it's going to be ideal and I'm, I'm so excited to have Burlington people, people be able participate at that in a, in a affordable, at an affordable rate. I guess my only question would be, so this is one piece of the total allotment of apartments that will be going down into that area. Do we have any idea where the next group will be going or how, you know, in relation to this, will it be? And will it be the same type of thing, you know, at Lifetime or is that, is this kind of a one?
I don't think we know yet, Joe. I think it's, you know, we'll see how this goes. If it goes well, you could well see a second phase. I think on the, on the rendering that we submitted, you saw another building on the other side of the Fourth Ave Commons. That's a logical location. The building that's on that site today is not a new building. So again, I, in, in my world, I just have to take it piece by piece, but we're trying to follow the overall master plan in everything we do and, and, but yeah, I do see this as a sort of a wellness village. And if we could get another building right in there. And as you know, we granted 300 units at town meeting. We're proposing 167 as part of this first phase. So the next building would be about 130. So it'd be a smaller building, but we're hoping right in the same neighborhood, hopefully right, right on the, right on the common.
Okay, great. Very good. I'm, I'm all set, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Paul Raymond.
Yes, I frequently come down Terrace Hall Avenue, out around there and I'm always waiting to be surprised by the sculpture that's going to be there.
Enough said.
Yes. Is that ever going to happen or is that just going away?
It is. It is. There is a, there is a sculpture pad installed at Lifetime Fitness. There will be a sculpture pad installed at a mutually agreed location here and we, we are committed to doing it. It's just, we need, it's been, it's been a tough year. We need some time to think about it. I want to reach out to the Burlington Sculpture Committee, which has itself matured, I think, a lot in the last year. And they've got some relationships with the Massachusetts Sculpture Association and I think we'll get there very quickly. And I just want to make sure what we do is, is the right thing. But yes, I think it would, it would definitively be additive to Northwest Park to have good sculptures in and around the park. And we've said that for some time. We're a little behind, Paul, and I, I'll take that, I'll take the hit.
Okay, no. Well, Barbara and I are both on the Sculpture Park Committee. So we, we, I'm sure Barbara joins me in expressing our appreciation for your contribution to our nice little sculpture park in the center of town. That's great. My, my concern is the traffic. When I come out of Terrace Hall and take a left, I'm glad that Third Avenue is down there because that slows things down a little bit. Because that turnpike is becoming a turnpike. There's a lot of traffic on it. And at my age, most of it's going by me pretty fast. Nonetheless, the light does slow things down. And if, you know, there was some way to direct the traffic toward that intersection, I think it would help. And, you know, so I would like you to, to keep that in mind. But I, I love the common. It's very nice and, and all adds, should I say to the ambiance, but no, to the, to the character of the town of Burlington. And we appreciate your support there and thanks very much. I'm all set, Barbara.
Thank you, Paul. Brenda Rappaport, would you like to jump in?
My mouth fell asleep. Sorry about that. No, I don't have anything to add. All of my questions have been answered and I'm excited to see this project come to fruition. Thank you.
Thank you, Brenda. Gaffney?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. So I thank the applicant for answering one of my questions. It was question number nine. There were nine other questions that weren't answered. So if you want to get around to those and put those in writing and you can put them up on the website and appreciate that. So I'm not going to go through all the nine. I think the last meeting we said, anybody puts down their questions, we'll have them answered. And I think they got one. So my other questions today are going to be, and Barbara, thank you for bringing that up because that was my concern as well. I don't think this was the intent of town meeting approval, 300 unit, was to have it tied to the lifetime. But with the, the rent being what it would be without the Lifetime Fitness membership, I'd be okay with that. And so that would be kind of the standard rent that you would have at any other one that we're figuring out. So that would really, I think the intent of that was not to have a high-end place for our seniors, but if they're going to live high-end at the, at the price that they would at, at any other place, I think they'd be okay with that. I did see on your out of tradition that there was a conference room there. I was wondering maybe, I'm not sure why in these, this type of place, again, I'm not a high-end lover, but why would you have a conference room in this type of place? Maybe what you could do with that fairly large area, you could squeeze in another senior living area, maybe another senior apartment. You did show some outdoor yoga and spin on the common area. Would that be free to residents or is that just a Lifetime Fitness activity?
I think the outdoor spin and I don't know the answer to your question, Bill. At Third Avenue, I don't know T2, if you know the answer. I think those are, which are.
There's a mix. Some of them are hosted by, by private business and others are sponsored by the park for free attendance.
You know, a lot, a lot of the events at Third Ave have been free. We do Halloween events. We do movie, movie nights. We do, you know, but it's, it's a mix. It's a mix, Bill.
Okay. So I guess my question on this one, is it going to be a mix or is it going to be exclusive to Lifetime? And why, why I say that is again, maybe from an exclusivity standpoint. So it's like, here's your park. We're spinning. We're going to have some yoga there, but guess what? It's only Lifetime folks and, and the rest of Burlington can enjoy that space.
Yeah, that's not our intention.
They're the community communities and I'm going to try to see if we can remove the, the sense of exclusivity.
I, I, I think we share your vision. We share your vision to that.
Okay.
So I think you'll, I think you'll see an attempt to do farmer's markets. I think you'll see an attempt to do concerts.
Again, maybe, maybe I'm losing it there, Todd. This is specific to kind of some outdoor physical activities. So I wouldn't like to see that all the outdoor physical activities, like the yoga and the spin, that you showed, that that would be exclusive to Lifetime. So maybe that's what you can put in there. My other question is, and thanks for showing that landscape island. I think that's going to be good, but if you could put, with the one-way coming into Lifetime, if that could be landscaped, so you don't have, and I'm sure you do a nice job on that, but that's, that wasn't up to me. So landscape around that, that island. And I think that's all I have for now. But again, the, the rest of the nine questions, if you could complete those and just jump up on the website and let me know when you have that done. I appreciate that. Thank you.
We will. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Next up will be Micah Spao.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A lot of my questions are already answered, especially the one about the senior housing. Definitely going to get my mom to consider moving to Burlington now. I like the concept and I like the Lifetime angle in it. I especially like the, what you guys are doing with the Fourth Avenue Commons. And how you mentioned that'll be open to all of Burlington. So forward to hearing more about the project and looks good so far. Thanks, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Ernie?
Whoops. There we go. Thank you, Madam Chair. A couple of things. It, it, it looks, looks very nice, I think. But I think you could mess it up if you aren't really careful about how you landscape that front parking lot, which is going to be everybody's view of the whole thing from Middlesex Turnpike. The building is building very nice looking, at least the initial artist renditions of it. And obviously it's Lifetime building sitting there. But everybody's going to be looking at it through, or not everybody, people on the Middlesex Turnpike are going to be looking at it through that parking lot. So they have to be, I would say, have to be really, really extra careful about how you handle the landscaping and maybe go even above and beyond with the, the number or the caliber of the trees you put in there, things like that. You know what I'm talking about, Madam Chair.
We, we agree with you. And at the last presentation, we showed you what was designed and what had, at Third Avenue and what had grown in, you know, with proper care. And so we, we agree with you and, and that's our intention.
Yeah. The, the other corners at Third Ave, they're actually buildings on the corners. So you don't really have that big blank expansive, hopefully well landscaped, as we, you know what I'm saying.
You're, you're expecting gateway landscaping. We, we agree.
And it's, it's difficult to do in a parking lot. So you, I mean, you can, it's going to take some, some doing, some thought, that's for sure. But the other thing I noticed was the, there, there seems to be some concern from our Traffic Safety Officer and other people about the driveway coming out, which is now going to be probably a little bit busier driveway. And I would, I would suggest that your exit out of that driveway onto the Middlesex Turnpike, make that angle even more obtuse and it's going to be as shown here, even if you have to squeak into the, into the green space in the front of the parking lot and make the island in between the two lanes bigger so that it's very, very difficult to.
Okay.
As you know, people are going to, they're going to try and take a turn, even if, even if it's very difficult. So the more difficult you make it, the less possible that the turn's going to be. But, you know, other than, other than that, I think it's coming along well. And as one of the original people on the, on PDD Committee, along with the large town committee, committee that you had there, I think most people on the committee would say that, that their aspirations are, are being fulfilled. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ernie. I don't really have any other questions. I'm looking forward to learning more. I think it looks very innovative and exciting and something I'm really looking forward to, to watching come to life. Is there anyone in the listening audience that wants to ask a question or make a comment on this project? All right, seeing none.
Hi, good evening. I'm a resident in Burlington. I just have a curiosity. Is this a Lifetime living? Have any association with Lifetime Fitness? Are they belong to the same order?
Can you just, can you give us your name and address and?
Yeah, my name's Jenny. I live in Seven Eight Mount Burlington, Massachusetts. So it's a great educational to listen this time. Now I learn a lot of things. So I just curious about for this Lifetime living, which just seems like a really great advanced healthy living style to provide in Burlington Town. I do curious about it. Does this business have any association with Lifetime Fitness? Are they belong to the same owner?
It is a joint venture between Lifetime Fitness and Nordblum. The people who are living in this building in the future, as I understand it, and Todd can correct me if I'm wrong, the your Lifetime membership would be included in the cost of your rent.
Madam Chair, that's exactly correct.
Okay, thank you for answering the question. So just my personal sound, I might not be right because it's just my personal individual sound. It's a great project for Burlington, definitely will benefit a lot of people, not only Town Burlington, but also Lifetime will benefit a lot from this high end apartment increase in revenue and will attract a lot of people coming to this town because after you're going to the gym or leaving the apartment. So as you guys already mentioned, that'll bring some pressure for the for the traffic. But like, you know, I understand that because we want to develop Burlington Town more further. So I'm just wondering if the, you know, the Lifetime can considering to give Burlington Town residents some in a discount on the gym membership, that'd be great. Why you think about that? Because I have a friend work in other company either. So she told me that she even get a group discount from Lifetime Fitness. So I know it's very common for a lot of gym to give big corporation group discount because they think, oh, you have a lot of employees and get our membership, we give you discount. But you're thinking about Burlington Town, we have a, we are the big group. How many people we have here, right? How will give us some discount as appreciation for our town to help you expand your business, to help you be more successful? It just represent my own opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. It's a lovely idea. I think we should put the question to Lifetime Fitness.
It has to be fair. You know, we do do corporate memberships. And so certainly the general manager at the Burlington Club can help present any of those options. And also you can link through our website to get more information about either corporate memberships or group memberships.
Okay, maybe that's something we should look into. I don't know if it's a board of selection thing or that would work, but it's a great idea. Thank you. Thank you for your time. Is there anyone else that would like to spend this matter? Okay. All right, then I think we're going to continue this meeting to our fifth meeting. If I may have a motion?
Madam Chair, does Michael like to make a motion to continue these matters to the planning board meeting of February 4?
Thank you.
Chairman Mordrum?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Penra?
Yes.
Member Clark Raymond? Member Cavino?
Yes.
Member Españo?
Yes.
Member Gaffney?
Yes.
Member Rappaport?
Yes. Okay, thank you, everyone.
Thank you all very much.
Consideration.
Thank you.
Thanks, folks. Good night.
Okay, so let's see, what time is it? Let's try to dive here before 10:30. We have meeting minutes on November 19th and December 3rd. Are there any members who are not able to vote on these meeting minutes? Okay, so I cannot because I have not reviewed them. But if the rest of the team has, I think we can.
I have, I just had a comment on the 19th minutes.
Okay.
There was discussion with the Business Development Director, and there was a good period of time talking about the ability to signage in the downtown, how we can kind of keep an eye on that or how that happened in her particular town. And that whole discussion isn't on the minutes. I wonder why that was removed.
Okay, I can probably add that.
Okay, great. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Maybe we should delay the meeting on that one? Other members all reviewed the meeting minutes of December 3rd?
I did, but it was such, it was a while ago and I, and I, I'm not, can't recall the comments that I had on it. So I don't want to, I don't want to, I don't want to vote on it at this point.
Okay.
Madam Chair, this is Brady. If the board, I can certainly resend out the minutes next week too. And I also have the newest set of minutes from the meeting of January 7th. And then the board members can submit their revisions to me or the edits that we have.
Why don't we do that? We can just push this off to the next meeting, but we'll try and get through a bunch of them in the next meeting. Thank you. Because we're doing so well, keeping up. We don't want to fall too far behind. Brady and everybody's been doing a great job. So let's not slide on that. But we can certainly put it off for one meeting. Thank you. All right, other matters. We do have a matter to discuss, which is there's a warrant article coming up at town meeting in a couple of weeks. The Board of Health is looking to hire a new Associate Director of Public Health. I had a brief conversation this morning with Ed Weiner, who is Chair of the Board of Health. And I know he also has discussed this with Kristin. It's my understanding that this position is needed in great part because of the amount of hi, of biotech companies that are coming into Burlington. And we really need that expertise in house so that we can make sure that everything is done correctly and safely for Burlington. I would, I mean, Kristin can can sort of expand upon that a bit. But what I'm looking for tonight and what the Board of Health is looking for tonight is a vote of this board, hopefully just giving our support to the Board of Health for this new position.
Madam Chair, I have a comment on that. It's interesting. You know, we put all that effort into getting the zoning correct for that. And now they're looking for a position. Would it make sense to fund that position with fees for applications for life science applicants?
Um, I, as I understand it, I mean, I think that's something that we can, sort of a calculation we can do to justify things, but I don't think we can actually allocate money that way. It's not really within our purview.
Yeah, I understand. Yeah, because it doesn't, it didn't make sense to me that you say, okay, now, you know, we did all that work. And now it's going to say, now we need somebody to to kind of look after these sites. And then, so the other way to fund that would be what taxes? That's not currently there. Or is there a grant or something that can help that? Or maybe staff can say, there's a, you know, this Massachusetts grant that can fund that extra person because of the way we are when we went to that biotech level?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure what the funding would be. And I understand the concern. I'm not sure that it's our place to take a position on how it's funded. I think really what the Board of Health is looking for us is from us is more our support for the idea that this is an expertise that we need in house so that we can continue to expand and invite more companies into Burlington in this area and do it safely.
Yeah, I guess my thought there was that if we didn't have this expertise in house at the beginning, then how are we approving these currently?
I think we, it's not that we don't have the expertise in. I don't think we have the bandwidth. That's my understanding. Kristin, is that yours as well?
Well, according to the Board of Health and, you know, our process, I mean, they, as you've been watching, they have adopted new regulations for life science that were just adopted last year that have, they initially, they initially had RNA regulations. They've expanded them to really all biological agents. So yes, I think they are seeing more, more folks that are coming in under life science and biotechnology. I would assume that they're looking at their fee structures for their application process, like we all do, when looking at increased amount of time and review needed for certain projects, as well as, you know, other consultant fees that they may have been using to review some, some projects that they feel that they want to have that expertise in house. I will say just historically, I mean, to have environmental engineers like we've had in Burlington for as long as we've had, I think has made a really big difference in terms of understanding the industrial mistakes of the past and how we redevelop in that arena, I think has been critical for us to be as successful as we have been in, at least in that area. And I guess I feel the same way about biotechnology as well in life science and having internal expertise as part of the permit team, I think, is always an added benefit for both us going through permitting, but as well as, you know, businesses working with us and that we all have a, you know, can have a general understanding. I agree with Barbara. I don't think it's our place to get into where, how this is funding, where it is, how much they pay the, you know, that piece of it, I don't think we need to weigh in, weigh in on. But in terms of the piece of the expertise needed, the really the responsibilities of the Board of Health. I mean, obviously, in the last nine months, it's been extreme. But really looking at the responsibilities overall with the a lot more life science activity in Burlington is more than it was in the past. And, and knowing and having that experience in the planning department and having a lot more to do and the same amount of people to do it, I appreciate the need for added professional expertise. So that's the only.
I think you can say that for every department.
With this group. So, and I support the added expertise and just wanted to throw it out there because Susan, the Direct Susan Luminalo and Ed Weiner, the Chair, wanted to discuss it with us and wanted to discuss with you.
I think, I think you can say that for every department in town, right? That everybody needs a little more help. And I think the only way I could support this was to say that the, they looked at their fee structures and up them such that this is going to be something that's going to be, you know, kind of handled by increased fee structures. And I think we are in a position to do that. Otherwise, how do you support that? Because, you know, you won't hire everybody for every department. But, you know, do we, do you, do you need it? I don't see anything here, other than you say you guys supported because you've been having more biotech, but we've been, you know, supporting biotech what we currently have. So I don't have that kind of data in front of me. So I don't think I can support that, but that's just one person. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, are there any other members that want to comment on this?
May I?
Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
No, I just want to weigh in on it. You know, there are certain people that you just, I do, you know, find appear to me to really know what they're doing, long term, have the best interest of the town at heart. And Ed Weiner is one of them. I think he's been a wonderful contributor to our town, particularly on the Board of Health. And if he sees a need for, I would support him in that. And I would guess, one of the things that you're going to see, we, if you follow, you know, in the newspaper, what's happening to some of these companies, there have been some, some major purchases made involving businesses in Burlington that involve billions of dollars. And we're, there was an article, a headline in the Globe about biotech and so forth. And it was naming the towns where they're going as they're moving out of Cambridge. And one of them was Burlington. So we're appearing on the map there. And that's good business because going forward, we have Azure, is that who's coming in? And they're going to, they're going to bring more people in too. So if they feel that they need more help, those companies are all going to be paying taxes that are coming in. So I think, you know, I would consider that part of their contribution through their payment of taxes and so forth. But yeah, we have to be careful about not overtaxing ourselves. And I think we're pretty good at that. But we certainly have benefited tremendously from our commercial sector. And I think Azure is going to be a real incubator, and they're going to bring even more people in. And I wouldn't be surprised in the future if we're more known for Burlington Biotech than we are for the engineering companies and so forth. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Joe?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want a second. I couldn't agree more with Paul about Dr. Weiner. I think he's been phenomenal and best interest of the town. I also kind of know a little bit, I mean, you know, when they take in these, when we take in these permitting fees, they go in the general fund and, you know, it just, it just helps fund the whole town and, and balance the budget on a yearly basis. So, you know, I, I think what we've done is we've kind of proactively gone out and put ourselves in a position where we've become a platinum ranking in, in these biotechs, you know, and life sciences. And I think it's, it was, it couldn't have been a smarter, a smarter move in hindsight because what it's allowed us to do is diversify to the point where, you know, when we run into these issues that we've been having with this COVID and the pandemic and, and, you know, the, 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 the lack of a need for office space now, we've diversified and hopefully we continue to diversify into some of these life sciences and things that are going to be somewhat recession proof. And I think what happens in the long run is, you know, if the more of these we can bring in, and again, I don't, I don't say we, you know, you've got to also, you know, it's got to be a balance. But the bottom line is these are, these are kind of recession proof businesses. And, and, you know, it will prevent the town of Burlington from, you know, from maybe taking as big of a hit over the next few years from, you know, this, this, this lack of need for office space that we would have. So I think in the long run, financially, it's such a great thing for the town to be able to have these life sciences here to offset some of the office space and some of the retail that we have to kind of diversify us and put us in a better financial position going into the future. And I think the simple, you know, the reality of it is, you know, a, a, a simple salary of one, one person like that, if that's what it's going to take to put the town in a tremendously better financial situation going forward into the future, I think it's well worth the, the investment. And I also happen to be, I would hope that this person is not only going to help with the permitting process, but they're also going to be able to monitor and maybe inspect these life sciences businesses over the period of time that they end up being, you know, within our town. So I, I think it's, I think it's important that when you bring these types of users into the town, that you have experts. And I think probably my guess is that the, you know, the Board of Health has been so focused on getting these kind of businesses through and permitted and then realized, okay, now, you know, not that they can't, that they don't have the expertise necessarily to handle it. I think it's, they're realizing that over the long run, you know, it's going to take a lot of monitoring and inspections and things like that, that, you know, that it's going to, it's going to justify or require an additional position. So I, I, I'm very in favor of, of that hire. I'm just hoping they hire, you know, and I'm sure they will, somebody who's really knows this stuff and is, is going to be aggressively monitoring and, and helping with that, that process. Because, you know, it's, I mean, that, that field can be somewhat scary if you don't have the right experts in place and people that know what they're doing. So I think it's, you know, that's, in my opinion, I think it's a, it's a good, it's a good purchase or a good, a good hire.
Okay, thank you, Joe. Mike, did I see your hand up?
Thanks, Madam Chair, yeah. I watched a little video that was with the backup on this. And Dr. Warner, he stressed several times that this was a need before COVID. My, my question is, I'm not necessarily against this letter or supporting it. It's just, why wasn't this, this done before COVID? I mean, I know that they've had a really tough, tough go with COVID. And I know that, you know, talking about how they haven't had days off in months and stuff. And I don't mean to minimize the contribution the Board of Health has made to this town in the past 10, 11 months. It's been a nightmare. In the past 10, 11 months, it's been a nightmare for everybody and probably them most especially, but I know that it's not going to last forever and COVID is going to leave us soon, hopefully. And this budgetary year is just a real, real tough ask right now with every department being asked to cut their budget. I mean, I'd love a zoning enforcement officer, but I don't foresee the money for that being around. It just, I just, a little, I don't know, uneasy about the timing and um, just wondering why it wasn't done beforehand. It's just something that, a lot of things to be, to think about on this one. So I had, Madam Chair.
Okay. Anyone else want to weigh in?
Yes, Madam Chair. Ernie? Uh, I, I would agree with, uh, my fellow board members that our Board of Health and, uh, the Board of Health staff is, is exemplary. I mean, it's, we're very fortunate. But I also, I, I agree that, that the next few years, it looks like anyways, hopefully not, but it looks like going to, going to be real tough, tough years. And, uh, everybody's going to be asked to, uh, cut their budget, pinch pennies, whatever. So I, I wouldn't mind sending, uh, uh, I wouldn't mind having a motion that says that we do agree with the Board of Health that they may need this person. But I've also liked a motion to include that they look very carefully and very hard at some of their fees, especially their annual permit fees. I believe a lot of these companies require annual inspections and see if they can offset some of the additional expenditure with an increase in fee. I don't think that would scare any companies away. But I think it might, uh, it, it might help the overall situation. I understand the fees all go into the general budget, uh, general fund, but, uh, so yes, they may need the person, but, um, just like a lot of other departments in town may need some additional uh, people. So if they can figure a way to try and offset some of the, the, the additional money it's going to cost, I, I, and we could put that in our motion, I I would be in favor of a motion like that. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, um, wait, is there someone else? I thought I heard something. No? Okay. I have something to say. Um, they're looking for $40,000.
For half a year?
For a half a year. And so $80,000 a year. Personally, I think that given how important this sector is to us and how we want it to grow, I think it is money well spent. Um, so I agree with Joe and Paul, but, um, I don't, I'm not, I certainly don't want to pressure anyone to sign on to a letter that they don't feel comfortable with. I'm not sure. I, I don't, I'm not really sure that it's our place to draft a letter of support and, and have part of that letter be instructing another board how they should be justifying or paying for the position. I, I just feel like maybe that's not our place. So if the, if the board is not comfortable sending just a letter of support that's acknowledging this need and, and in our support for that, I'm not sure that it, I'm not, I'm not sure I would be comfortable with a letter that, that goes further and and specifies how we think this should be paid for. I'm not familiar with fee structures that the Board of Health has. I have no idea if that's even possible or reasonable. I, I don't know. So I don't feel like I can delve into that area. Um, so I'm not sure how to proceed. Um, I don't know if perhaps it would make sense for a letter to go out with just those members who, who agree with it signing on. Um, Kristen, you can tell me if you think that makes sense.
This is, uh, Mr. Member Spel talked about some sort of video that support, that was the background to this. So when I look at this, you're putting me in a very difficult position to support this based on, on, on somebody saying I need staff.
No, I'm not putting you in that position. I'm this.
If you just let me finish.
Okay.
You know, we're, we're, in my business, if you, if you need extra staff, there's justification. And that's how you say, I support this. So if, if there's a video out there and I have the ability to look at that video and then say, hey, based on what I see in the, in the video from, you know, the, the Board of Health, I would agree with that, but all I have is, is this, it just makes it very difficult for me to uh, it, it, to, to support it, you know, either way, like I think Member Covino said, every, every department's gonna, you know, want, they probably need staff, you know, and it's just the way it goes. Everyone's tight. We're tight. I agree with Member Spel that if there was, if we could write a letter to, you know, the, the Board of Health to say, would they support a, a, a sign enforcement officer? Would they do that? Because we really need it. Uh, it, it just, you know, I'm willing to do it, but I just don't have anything more than just this. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, Kristen. Um, what are your thoughts about this? Should we just say nothing? Or should we come, come up with a letter and allow members to decide whether or not they want to sign on? Not necessarily tonight. They can do a little bit more due diligence before they make that decision? Or do you think if we can't be unanimous, it doesn't make sense to do it?
Well, I mean, I think, you know, this is a specific position that's being sought by another department. Um, that does have something to do with what we do. I mean, if we want, I agree that we don't get into the weeds about it. I don't want to manage how other departments do things, just like I don't want them to try to manage how we do things. Um, but, you know, to the point of, I think we all truly believe that um, life science, the life science industry and growth in that industry in Burlington is important. I mean, we can neutralize a letter to kind of look toward, you know, whatever we could do to strengthen that continued growth. Um, I don't know. I, I, I'm hesitant to suggest. I'm, I, I don't, you know, I don't want to say all the nuance of, you know, I hundred percent support the position and how it's funded and because I don't know. I don't know if I do. I mean, but I do support that, you know, we need to do what to be, you know, to give ourselves a strength to in departments. But I also agree that we've been talking about a zoning enforcement officer. We talk about a lot of other things and, um, you know, I, I don't want to compete needs of different departments with other departments, but I do support that the industry is important and to have expertise is important. Whether we stop it there and just let people take it as what it is, um, we can do that, or we can just decide not to sign a letter. Um, and just kind of have people ask it during.
Why don't we do this? I'd like to make a suggestion. I'm going to Kristen, our staff to write a letter that you think the what you just wrote without getting too deep into the weeds and then send it out to the, to the board so that we can all consider it. In the meantime, perhaps Mike can tell us all or send us the video so we can all watch it. Um, and we can, a little bit more before we make our decision about the letter.
It was sent to all of us today at 3:51, Kristen.
When was it?
Today. The backup to Article Four and the Ed Weiner video.
Oh, but it was today at three. I mean, it wasn't.
Oh, I see the email. Yeah.
It's in our email.
Okay. If you want to send that, so I'll draft a letter. I'll send it around. Um, Monday is town meeting, so so I'll, I'll try to circulate it. Um, so you have it over the weekend. You guys give me a thumbs up by noonish on Monday and we can have it ready if we need it.
The deadline. Yeah.
Thanks. That sounds good. All right. Um, well, we're not getting out of here by 10:30, but I am determined to be done before 11:00. Can we have a very quick update on the Board of Appeals situation with Windview Heights Two?
Sure.
Is it possible to do that quickly?
Uh, I'll do my best. Um, so Windview Heights Two uh, opened at the Board of Appeals on Tuesday. Uh, you can watch it on BCAT or BCAT Facebook um, pa- page, uh, if you want to re-watch it. Uh, it was an interesting hearing. Um, I think there was about 20 or so of butters, uh, all very against the project. Um, I, you know, I think the team could have been a little more prepared for some of the questions. There was some, a lot of information that Town Council was looking for from the applicant. They did agree to hire a civil peer review, um, which I'm assisting them to try to work that out. Um, our role in terms of 40B is really to assist in the process of permit review with departments. Um, in term, just, so it's not, you know, I'm not assisting necessarily the Board of Appeals, but really the how the process rolls through to get comments back from departments, um, and, and so forth. So, um, similar to the Corporate Drive 40B, how we were, I was actually way more involved in that one than this one. But, um, uh, anyway, um, I think it is a project for which we will want to make a comment. Um, I'm not sure if now, because it just opened, is the time. I foresee this being open through February, um, possibly early March. Um, they have a 180-day deadline, but that's six months. I, I mean, that's far from now, but I, I think um, we should probably send some messages sometime in February. Um, as I mentioned, there's still information that's coming in. I don't have all that information, so we haven't, we haven't digested it on, you know. There's, if there's, I think there's issues with the project. Um, you know, I, I can't speak to them specifically because we're still looking for information, but um, a lot of the neighbors brought up issues with the easement across Windview Heights One, um, that I think are, are concerned. So, um, anyway, it, I think at some point you certainly will want to weigh in and just wanted to give you an update on that. Um, I believe they're continued to their second meeting in February. Um, so it'll be at least a month or so before we hear it again. Um, Ernie, I have a question for you. When they came to you at the Board Housing Partnership Meeting, that was what, a year and a half ago?
Oh, at least, yes. It was quite a while ago, quite a while ago. More than, more than a year, uh, less than two.
So a question that had come up was because there was a letter in support of the Board of Selectment as well as a letter of support from the Housing Partnership, but what was unclear was how much information, was there a site plan at all developed for that conversation? Do you recall?
Uh, I do not recall. I don't believe so. I don't even believe that a number of units were revealed at that time. I would think the question was more, would you support the concept of?
Okay.
In my memory anyways.
Specifics. You really start kind of looking, looking at it a, you know, a little bit. Um, anyway, okay. That was just a question that would come up over the last week. Um, was that fast enough? More to come, I guess.
Yes, I think it was. Thank you. Thank you, Kristen.
No, I didn't know if you have a comment, uh, the Vice Chair? I know you watched the meeting as well.
No, I'm just a little baffled with the whole thing. Not sure how it originated or where it came from, but.
Okay.
Um, it was, it was an interesting meeting. It's for sure. So I will reserve my comments to, uh, for when we have discussion on it. And, uh, you know, I just, you know, it, what I, the, the piece that is going to be very difficult to overcome, aside from the issues, the, the obvious issues with the easement is, is the width of the, the only access and egress from that property. Uh, and the amount of traffic they're going to be putting over that. It's just baffled.
Twenty-four units, right? Isn't that what it is now?
Twenty-four units, yeah.
That's what I thought, Joe. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. And, uh, it's, it basically it's going through Richardson and it's, if you look at those roads, they're about, about the width of a, of a driveway. You know, they, there were some neighbors there last night saying that you barely can pass two cars on the road in, if you're coming in opposite directions. If a delivery truck is parked on the side of the road because it's a little wider than a car, you literally can't pass it as a, as another vehicle. So not sure how they're going to do that, but that's, that'll be, you know, interesting to see how they overcome that. Um, anyway, that, those are the comments. I'll reserve the rest of them and we'll, uh, we'll keep following it.
All right. Thank you, Joe. Um, unless somebody has any other business they need to bring forward, I think, uh, Ernie.
Sorry. Uh, a few.
Trying so hard.
Yeah, I know. Uh, I'll, I'll be quick. Few, a few meetings back, we had talked about possibly looking at and voting on the last two elements to master plan. And I think we, did we have to some discussion about possibly putting together a working group? Or am I thinking of another project? If we didn't, should we? I mean, we don't seem to be getting anywhere. Uh, or does that, is, is it still, is it too few people discussing a, uh, an element that could have some?
I would ask who wants to be on it. Barbara has commented quite a bit on our drafts online. Ernie, you've had some comments on the drafts.
I would, but do you think it doesn't make any sense to do it, to put together a group?
It would be helpful for us.
Okay.
Um, I'm fine with that. I'd be, I would like to participate. Who else wants to be on that group? All right, just me?
Well, I, I would all, obviously, but why don't we just advertise it to all the members and hopefully anybody that can come will come.
Can I get back to you on that?
I was just gonna say I can try to attend if, you know, depending on when the meeting time is, but.
All right. Sounds good. Go set something up and send it out to everybody.
Yeah. Otherwise, I'm afraid we, we just won't get there. I'd like to get there before I leave.
But we, it's on, it's on our, definitely on our radar.
Uh, thank you.
The building inspector will be coming to our next meeting as well, just to introduce.
Thank you. Great. I'm done, Barbara. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, is that all? Great. Then I'm looking for a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Chairman Warru.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Npamba.
Yes.
Member Tukweman.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Spel.
Yes.
Member Gashman. Member Rappaport.
Yes.
Somu, have a good night.
Bye, everybody.
Good night.
Thank you. Good night.
Be looking for the minute.